Hi. Welcome to the Monday, June 12th, 2023 Study Session: Annual Reports to City Council from the Beautification Advisory Committee, Economic Development Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission, and Planning Commission. So I see Planning Commission is the first on my list. Is there a staff report that precedes everyone's reports?
The City Council holds annually a study session for presentation of the City Committee and Commission annual reports, and that is what we're holding today for each of the City Committee and Commissions, noting that the Library Advisory Committee has not met since the onset of COVID, so there will be no report from the Library Advisory Committee. And with that, we'll start with the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. Planning Commission, you're up. And welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I'm Lauren Berman, current Planning Commission member, and last year I was the Chair of the Planning Commission. And here with me is Samantha Hauser. Last year she was Vice Chair, and this year she is current Chair of the Planning Commission. So tonight, we're going to present on a couple topics. We're going to run through the purpose of the Planning Commission, our Commission member team, and a work summary of what we accomplished in 2022, some key metrics, major policy initiatives that we worked on, and public transparency and participation initiatives. Oh, there you go. So the purpose of the Planning Commission is to recommend and advise the City Council on matters related to the general plan, local coastal programs, zoning, and other development plans for future physical development and conservation of the city based upon geographic, social, economic, and environmental characteristics of the community. And we also advise the Council on private development plans for the city in accordance with state planning law and the city's established development review standards and processes. And this year, our work in, or I should say, last year, our work in 2022 truly embodied this mission statement, and the Planning Commission team fulfilled our priority and our prerogative to the Council and the city in so many ways, some that we'll go over tonight, such as the 2040 general plan, the Sharp Park specific plan, ordinance changes and tax amendments, and a variety of development projects. Thanks. So we have a very diverse commission. Everything from engineers to contractors, interior contractors, someone that works in healthcare, and residential developer, as well as a software expert. This really diverse commission is a great team, and we work well together, especially reviewing projects holistically and from a variety of perspectives. And I truly say that our team, in our diversity, were experts that are well-suited to fulfill the Planning Commission's purpose. So in 2022, we had 17 regular meetings and two adjourned regular meetings. We saw 11 development proposals, and some significant items that we heard were the extension of growth management ordinance, the tax amendment to outdoor commercial permits and parklets, and and a mixed-use building on Crespey Drive. And then, of course, we recommended to Council the 2040 general plan, the Sharp Park specific plan, and tax amendment to the outdoor commercial permits.
All right. So as Commissioner Berman mentioned, we saw 17 newer continued public hearings, which included the approval of 21 dwelling units and about 3,100 square feet of commercial. This included the mixed-use project at Crespey Drive, as well as two single-family homes. There were zero dwelling units and commercial square feet that came before us that were denied. And we're excited that next year we'll be able to report the additional 70 units of housing at the school district site on Odstad. The permits that we issue, as you can see from the slide in front of you, have stayed pretty stable the last five years. They're in the 1,400 to 1,600 permit issuance range. But what you'll notice, which I think is really interesting, is that the valuation of projects has gone up significantly in 2021 and 22 for residential projects, and significantly last year for commercial projects. And that's because the projects that we've reviewed have had significantly more value. Notably, they include the Civic Center renovation and Eureka Square exterior upgrades on the commercial side, the 1,300 Danman mixed-use project, which straddles commercial and residential, and the Villages at Pacifica project and 801 Fassler on the residential side. Happy to answer any questions about that. On the screen are some of the priorities that pertain to the Planning Commission. Our purpose is to kind of help implement your vision, and this includes things like the Civic Center project and the Sharp Park specific plan, which were approved and recommended for approval last year. And we look forward to continuing executing on your vision. We are also excited -- let's see if I can make this slide go. We are also excited to include and incorporate digital participation in meetings last year so that people can dial in, participate via Zoom, or participate in person at council chambers. And so with that, we're really honored to be your Planning Commissioners. We're grateful for your time, and we're here to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from Council? Seeing no lights, I'll just take a moment to say thank you for being here. Mayor, did you have something you wanted to say? Go for it.
Okay. I just want to thank you. I have watched you and learned from you, and I respect you. I respect your decisions, and I think it's important for our community to really pay attention to that because, like you said, there is such a diverse group of people on the Planning Commission, and the work that you've done, the body of work that you have had to address in the past couple of years is, like, immense. And yeah, I'm just expressing my gratitude.
Thank you.
So, you know, I began up here as a Planning Commissioner, serving with both of you. And A, it's good to have you all in the same room, so there's that. B, you know, watching, like, say, the Quarry meeting the other week. I thought you all had it tough with the general plan. And going into Housing Element, I figured, okay, there's another tough round. You know, it was Local Coastal Land Use Plan when I was serving with you all. And it's like, it doesn't seem to get any easier. And the conversations become more robust and more adamant. And during those very difficult conversations, we have this group of seven individuals, each of whom bring a different technical perspective to the work. And through sometimes very heated conversation, which is sometimes predicated on desire more than some of the more technical work, that you all are able to address the community on the one hand, and then rise to the level of, and what is the technical work we need to do to address the community as well as those technical needs? It's extraordinary, and thank you all for what you do. Councilmember Bowles.
I also want to thank you as someone who's dug into a lot of these documents and spent a lot of time. I know how much you all have also, and I really appreciated, both of you especially, and all the good questions that you've asked. I just want to reiterate that we're partners in all this. And so, you know, if there are things that you all feel that you need that we can help you do your job better, you know, please let us know. We've been talking a little bit about, you know, possible training options and looking out for things like CQ training for Planning Commissioners, for example. But also, you know, as we're interviewing candidates for new positions, kind of just being open with us about what kind of skills you're looking for, too. So anyway, thank you again. I know it's just been a ton of work, and Pacifica's better because of your presence.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beer, did you have another comment?
Oh, no, that was from before.
Gotcha. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I thank you for what you do. You're the hardest-working Planning Commission probably this city has ever had. And you just, everything you approach with grace, professionalism, and you just take it in stride. It's very impressive, and I'm really, really grateful to you. So thanks for being with us.
Mayor Proten.
I am also grateful. I served on planning before you two and the rest of the Planning Commission. And we did not even come close to having the issues that you've had. We mostly dealt with houses, and we didn't have huge general plans, Sharp Park specific plan, the housing element, all of that. So you guys have worked extra hard, and thank you.
We truly are fortunate to have the level of professionalism you all bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next up, we have Parks, Beaches and Recreation Committee. Cindy Abbott, the Chair, I believe, is presenting. Welcome, Cindy.
And so we just use these buttons to move forward? Okay. Now, I've had my tech training. So, good evening, Mayor Big Stick, Councilmembers, staff and public. Thank you for requesting this presentation tonight. I'm Cindy Abbott, Chair of the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. And I'd like to thank all the members of the PBNR Commission for their volunteer service, and to acknowledge Commissioner Carl Nicolari, who gave his time to work on the presentation with me, but is out of town, so he can't be here tonight. The Commission is composed of seven members appointed by City Council. Current appointees are listed on this slide. And as you can see, we're looking forward to a newly-appointed Commissioner who will attend their first meeting later this month. Members of the Commission have lived in the city of Pacifica from anything from just a few to over 30 years. We have a diverse range of interests, from love of the outdoors, parks and trees, interest in the ocean, beaches and aquatics, biking, surfing, and skateboarding, libraries and public art and poetry, as well as for programs that reach Pacificans of all ages, from small preschoolers to our wonderful elders. All Commissioners share a belief in the value of service and giving back to the community, and current Commissioners have served for varying periods of time, from over 10 years to our soon-to-be-seated Commissioner, that provides both historical knowledge and fresh perspectives. The PBNR Commission meets the fourth Wednesday of the month here in City Council chambers, starting at 7:00 PM. And we value public comment and hope that members of the community will attend our in-person, but not televised, meetings. Let's see. Okay, there we go. The purpose of the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission is to recommend and advise the Council in the acquisition, development, and maintenance of parks, beaches, and other recreational areas, and to encourage the planning and implementation of a comprehensive recreation and human service programs that serves the needs of the city. The Commission acts in its advisory capacity to the Council, City Manager, and Director of the PBNR Department in all matters pertaining to public recreation. And we actually really appreciate it when the Council and staff reach out and request our review, detailed study, and opportunity to host public input meetings that shape our advice on topics of interest and concern to the community. Additional duties and responsibilities of the Commission are listed here, and I'll add one that I like to make sure folks are aware of, that the PBNR Commission also serves as the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or BPAC. And we'll cover in additional details on a few of these responsibilities in our presentation tonight. The past year has given the Commission several opportunities to review plans prepared by our City Consultant NCE to hear public comment and provide recommendations about proposed improvements to a number of our Pacifica parks. The Priority Parks Project covers four extensive projects at Brighton Park, Marvilla, Imperial, and Sky Ridge. And as you can see on this slide, these parks are located throughout the city of Pacifica, and that was really important to us, that we're looking at improvements throughout the range of the community, not focused in any single area, but multiple neighborhoods. Community comments and Commission review resulted in changes to play equipment to ensure variation between parks, which was really important to the community because our citizens go and visit all of our parks, not just the one in their neighborhood, and to provide opportunity for structures that encourage active play and stimulating motor skill development. Commission input is also focused on the need for additional trees and landscaping to supplement the equipment and seating areas to make parks welcoming to all ages and varieties of needs while in the park. These projects are currently at 65% construction drawing phase and will be reviewed one more time before finalization. The Commission has also reviewed and provided input into four smaller-scale park renovations through the Playground Improvement Program, focused solely on the play equipment itself. The project updates age equipment and brings it to current standards. The Pacifica Co-op Nursery Project, the one in the middle there, was recently completed, and next up is Odstad Park. The Commission has also reviewed and provided, let's see, as shared in prior presentations to City Council, the PBNR Commission embraced the call by the community to ensure equitable surf camp access. Over a year and a half, study sessions were held and a task force created to provide space for discussion and broad community input. And after approval, you approved those recommendations on January 10th, 2022. Since that time, staff and the PBNR Chair worked with the Coastal Commission on a coastal development permit that was required for both commercial and nonprofit camps to operate on the beach. The CCC approved that program in May of this year. A requirement of the CDP approval is the development of a community surfing agreement that identifies Pacifica State Beach and the ocean offshore as an area often frequented by beginner surfers and establishes a code of conduct that is inclusive and welcoming to all users and all levels of surfing. And that agreement is currently, has been a first draft of it and will be reviewed before finalization and signature by all of the camp providers. With the revised program, applications are going to be accepted twice annually now versus our historically once a year, and that will be in both June and December. And the PBNR Commission will provide ongoing review of the program that also has a requirement to be reported on annually to the Coastal Commission, and will continue to focus on surf equity and enjoyment of the beach by all who visit. The PBNR Commission hears appeals regarding the removal of heritage trees on both public and private property. Increasing development projects, concerns with safety of trees stemming from drought and disease impacts, storm damage and fire, along with not enough understanding of how to properly maintain our valuable urban forests, can result in appeals. Over the past year, one appeal was heard. This item was continued to a future meeting requesting additional information and clarification as we move forward under our new Protected Tree Ordinance, approved by the Council in October of 2022. Some members of the Commission have also shared their interest to provide educational resources to a broad group of community members, including tree companies, realtors, and residents, as it's clear that not enough information is known about the city's focus on preserving and the value of maintaining our urban forests for both climate resilience and neighborhood beautification. We look forward to continue to be engaged with you in this process. Over the past year, we were kept informed by staff about each of the broad areas that are under the umbrella of the PBNR Department, aquatics, childcare, recreation, and senior services. And the Commission has expressed appreciation for staff's responsiveness at bringing back programs following the pandemic and growing opportunities for the community, such as a vigorous summer adventure camps that began today and run for eight weeks through August 4th. And all of this has been taking place with a number of staff changes. One of the most significant staff changes took place over December and January. In December, a study session was held that provided the opportunity to share information and interests from both the outgoing and new Director of Parks, Beaches and Recreation, Mike Perez and Bob Palacio. And the Commission really appreciated the overlap that was allowed in department leadership that gave the two of them time to really trade information and for the Commission to kind of close things off with Director Perez, ask questions, and move forward with our new Director, Palacio. And because of that, Director Palacio's been able to jump right into a wide variety of items that we engage with. That includes the new life buoy stations that have been installed along the promenade. You see them out there, and will soon be available in other beaches. I had heard about an incident on Friday, but I did not know that for the first time one of those life buoy stations was utilized. And potentially, a life was saved, or somebody, a tragic incident, has been averted by having those there. So we are really excited about that and look forward to having them in more locations here in the city. We continue to explore the opportunity for paid telescopes that will provide additional enjoyment for visitors on the coast. Both Director Palacio, Supervisor Schreiber, and Commissioner Phillips have continued working with Bike Park Pacifica and have recently worked on an agreement to engage with Santa Cruz Mountain Trail stewardship for the new parks design at Lower Frontierland. And with the steep streets in some neighborhoods, a crest was made to consider adding a permit for bouncy or jumpy houses in our parks that currently isn't allowed. The Commission really appreciated staff's time, and they went way above and beyond reaching out to other municipalities to find out about their best practices and policies for bouncy houses in public spaces. And the Commission, with input from the PBNR Department and public work staff, has approved a pilot at Frontierland that will begin later this year. So what's ahead? Ongoing discussions about beach safety, from signage to educational flyers, as already covered, more ongoing review of our surf camps, more on park upgrades and trees, engaging with our new poet laureate, Toni Morisovich, on event planning and activities to bring poetry forward and to elevate the city of Pacifica. And we look forward to having the community celebration, the Fourth of July, with our traditional free, family-friendly, in-person gathering at Frontierland Park on, what's the date? July 4th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with singing of the National Anthem, partial reading of the Constitution and Declaration of Independence, live music, food, craft vendors, and games, including classics such as watermelon eating contests and the water balloon toss. We're a lot of fun. So I thank you for the time, and we welcome questions. And again, anything that you need us to review and bring forward information to you, we really appreciate the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Mayor Proten.
You know, I bet that a lot of people in this city have no clue whatsoever what you guys do because it's extensive, and people just go, oh, parks and beach. But you do a lot of things for the city. And again, thank you for all the time and effort that's been put into this, to your entire committee.
Councilmember Bowles.
It's so impressive to see this list of all that you work on, really. And, I mean, sometimes I think, oh, this is a fun job, right? These are all fun activities you do. And how wonderful it is to see your work come to fruition, like the life buoys out here this weekend. That is very moving. And the surf camp, I'm so excited that underrepresented groups, you know, we're going to be able to come and use our beaches equally here. I had one question about the parks, the playground upgrades, and I really appreciate all the public input that's been taken. And I know originally, there was a lot of repetition in some of the designs, and that's some of the feedback that was given, and, you know, working on different motor skills and so forth for our youth because families move around from one playground to another and keep things interesting. So will that, will those designs be coming back to us? Or is that reviewed internally, you know, with your committee and Parks, Beaches, and Recreation, and/or the Planning Commission? I'm not sure about what the process is.
So I know that we're going to see them one more time ourselves. So again, the public is invited. We like that input. I don't have the timing for that. I do believe that we're going to be talking at June about one park where we were actually advised that maybe this isn't the best bang for our buck, and that's up at Sky Ridge, where the community isn't sure how much they want there. We already scaled that one back so that we're spending our limited funds wisely. And I'm sure when it comes to actual funding for building them, that will come back to the Council.
Okay, thank you. And thanks again just for all your work, for yourself and your committee. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beer.
Hi, Cindy. Thank you so much. For one, I miss serving on Parkin Rock. I really do. And so to see all the work that you've done is inspiring, and it made me wish I knew more throughout the year, like, I should be paying more attention. And so I don't know what that means, but I really appreciate so much, gosh, just everything. And, you know, being a steward of the funds is actually really important, too. And I appreciate how you are looking at different parks in different areas of our city, and you're being equitable for all things, including surfing, and just thank you.
We have a lot to offer here with the beaches, as well as our 15-plus parks and other places.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Thank you, Cindy, for all that you do personally, and of course, for all the members of your Commission and the work that you -- you're a good leader, bringing together, as you stated, the people who haven't lived in Pacifica as long and haven't served as long. And I really appreciate having that institutional knowledge being transferred. It's really beneficial. One of the things I wanted to touch on was, I was excited to see the work with the poet laureate. And I remember, you may recall, ooh, so many years ago when we did Lit Wave. And I remember a really successful, I think you helped with a grant some kind of way, and I don't remember the details, for a poetry thing on the pier. And it was really well-received and really amazing. So I would love to see if there's any interest in that or if that could be investigated again. It's been a number of years, and I'm sure a lot of folks would like to do it. And then I wanted to echo Councilmember Bowles's statement about if there is particular expertise or interest or abilities that you're looking for when there are appointments that are coming up. that are coming up. It's helpful because as Councilmember Beer said, there's a wide variety. There's such, and Councilmember Vaudelas said, there's such a wide variety on that commission of what you do work on. And it would be helpful if we need to be focusing on one area or another in our appointments. So thanks.
Great, thanks for that opportunity. And coincidentally, our current poet laureate was who, prior to being our poet laureate, was part of that grant project to do the Pacifica Poetry Pier Walk. So we have been talking about that. It's big undertaking and as long as there's lots of help for the poet laureate, we are talking about making that happen again. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I haven't made my comments yet.
I thought you were trying to...
I mean, I agree with you, pretty much everything has been said and so I get to say as the last speaker, I get to echo everything everyone said. And, you know, echo the sentiment that it really is a remarkable spectrum that PBNR does and thank you for being the leader there. I was really just so happy that the surf camp, you know, I watched the Coastal Commission meeting, I heard you speak, and after a very long, extraordinary process, it was great to see the culmination of that collaborative effort that largely PBNR spearheaded, that according to Coastal Commission might wind up being a model for many other coastal communities. So thank you so much for all that work that I know that you and the Commission put in. And I look forward to being there on July 4th. And with that, thank you Cindy.
May your lemon tree do well.
Thank you very much. Planted just yesterday. Okay, so that brings us to Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission. I am showing Deborah Johnson and Bill Glasgow will be the ones given the, hey Bill.
You're good. Okay. And it's the little arrow, I assume? Thank you so much for letting us come and present. I'm always, I'm just so amazed when we all get to come and present of what we learn and like what you say, it's so nice to overlap. And actually, part of what I'm going to talk about is that we have had some overlapping of our different commissions to get more information. So this is our annual report. Oh, maybe it's not that one. There we go. Our commission is made up of nine commissioners. I am the chair this year. This is actually my fourth time as being the chair of the commission. So almost all of you have been on the commission at one point or the other. I've been on the committee for over 20 years. We have a lovely group of people that include a lot of healthcare. Several of us are nurses. We have law enforcement. We have engineer. We have, well, he's now retired now, but somebody from, used to work at FEMA, so had extensive emergency preparedness. So it's really a great group. I enjoy working with everybody. And then we had one past commissioner that left in October. So the role, as many of the other commissions are, really to recommend and advise the city council on city programs, activities, plans, and other related actions that assist the city in preparing for possible future disasters. And as we can see, and certainly about my time on the commission, what those issues are has really changed. Am I like, okay. So we can read that. We are nine members. We also have ad hoc committee members from the Red Cross, from the school district and the high school district that gives us that extra help. I'm really sorry. There we go. Those are our ex-official members. And our, obviously, our council liaison. Mayor Big Stick was last year and now our council member, Kristine Bowles, is our current one. And it's really nice to get the information from the, what's going on in the council and also how we can fit in to do that. And I really apologize. Staff liaisons. I would be so remiss without saying an enormous thanks to the Pacifica Police Department. Both Captain Chris Clements and this year Sergeant Tom Cumming have done an amazing job. They put so much together with, you know, everything else that the police department goes, does, but they have been wonderful partners and amazing support for this commission. So we are advisory, as you well know, and we insist in the preparation review of recommendations on disaster preparedness plans, increase community awareness, okay? And develop and distribute disaster preparedness information in the city, which is a lot of what we do. Now, in order to be able to advise the commission and to develop and implement and promote approval to you all, to the city, we need information on how to do that. And so this year and as other years, we have had, you guys have all read that. I didn't put this. Additionally, we also sit on as the appellate body for appeals relating to abandoned and inoperable vehicle abatement and vehicles parked greater than the 72 hours and appeals of staff decisions relating to traffic safety issues. We did not have any hearings this last year. So the review in the year. So what I really wanted to say is that we, you know, COVID-19 impact on all things globally, locally affected us. And it's very, we got good at Zoom, but you know, there's nothing like the in-person meetings and we have resumed. Anyway, so what I really wanted to focus on a lot though, is that we've had some special presentations to help us. I didn't, so, okay, I get what's happening here. All right. So we identified a big issue for Pacifica and I think it's only going to get more issues. I'm sorry, it's like on slow. All right. So we've had presentations from the Open Space and Parkland Committee. There was a lot of issue felt, people felt about the Maori Point and the parking and it kind of overflows into planning and commission and maybe parks and beaches too. Again, why it's important to communicate. North County Fire, we've had a couple presentations from then on wildfire mitigation and their grant project update. So as we all know, the recent, I believe it was the CZ Fire in San Mateo County, kind of pushed the issue of fire in our city here. Prior to this or, you know, in the last 20 years, Pacifica wasn't really considered that high of a fire zone. And now we're seeing much more, we're seeing people's insurance not getting reviewed. You've probably seen a lot about that in the newspaper. So we've really been focusing on wildfire and we've had the North County Police Department, I mean, North County Fire Association coming and making a presentation on the Zone Haven. Is there somebody that could really? There we go. Am I not doing it right? I really apologize to everybody. That's like one of those, can we turn that off? I didn't mean for it to be one at a time. Okay, tsunami, Captain Clements made a presentation on tsunami preparedness. We can't forget, you know, it's like everything happens at all at once, but we can't forget that if there's an earthquake, earthquake in Japan, earthquake, why we have to remember about tsunami, done a lot of work about the tsunami zones, the tsunami macks, their big, the tsunami macks, a big hit at the Fog Festival. Like I said, the North County Fire Authority has made two presentations. They've rolled out Zone Haven, which is a new system that involves dividing San Mateo County, other counties are participating in it, Zone Haven, and know your zone. And so it's really a great way to, everybody in the community knows their zone. It's a place to go to to get information during any issues that come up. You can find out if you're under evacuation, if you're need to, you know, seek higher ground for a tsunami. So we've really been promoting that. The North County Fire Authority, and I saw a little bit on social media, people are like going, what's the city doing about fire prevention? And so one of the things is the fire depart, I referred said person to the North County. They got grants and they did the chipper program in Lindemar that was great success. There was a lot of people, brought a lot of their stuff to do the vegetation management, talked a lot about clearing defensible space. And this is all something that we take in and learning and will roll out mainly at the Fog Fest, which is our biggest community education event that we like to. We were silent for two years and then last year was the first time we got to do the Fog Fest again. Now, we were a little out of practice and our booth was a little bit smaller and the paperwork, you know, so we're really working on how to roll it out better. But it's always, always greatly received by the community and just people there at the Fog Fest. Also, other community education, there was a wildfire awareness event at the community center last June and then May 20th, it just happened. The San Mateo County Disaster Day happens every year. We participate, we have a booth there. I've done that a couple times and it's coming up in August. Thank you. And then, like I said, our Fog Fest. During this time also, we were kind of involved a little bit in the promoting of the COVID-19 resources and I don't know if you all participated in the free testing site that was there at Pacifica, but it was a wonderful thing and I personally utilized it myself a couple of times. So we greatly appreciate that that was done. We had a community prep course that was virtual and in-person and then the CERT basic class is coming soon. A lot of people want to know about when is CERT coming up and I believe it's going to be next year. Next slide. We also sent letters of support for grant applications for roadway safety projects, the Rosita Road, pavement rehabilitation project, and the Sharp Park Priority Development Area Pedestrian Improvement Projects, where we kind of went around and gave our input of where those pedestrian improvements could be and gave our input to the city council. And social media, which we all know is a, it's here to stay. And both the police department and the city and the city public works have done amazing jobs with putting out weather alerts for our community on social media about the winds, about the flood. There's, I'm sure that it'll continue to happen. Upcoming events, like I said, the Disaster Preparedness Day will be August 5th and then culminating in our wonderful Fog Fest on September 23rd and 24th. So looking ahead, we're really going to continue to promote wildfire preparedness, the Ready Set Go, Zone Haven, getting everybody signed up for SMC Alert, community classes of first aid, expand the use of social media, update our disaster prep web pages and update our printed materials. We have a, we created a handout several years ago and it's probably time to look at that. Next. Thank you. Sorry, I apologize. I hate.
If I might. Don't apologize. We didn't know what it was supposed to look like. I always tell people when they're nervous or they're presenting, just, we have no idea. It looked great to me.
Oh, I know, I know. Thank you for that. It's just when those, you know what was happening. Thank you.
Pest laid plans and all that. I do have a question before going to other comments and that question is around traffic appeals. And I had the honor of serving as liaison the prior year and I did not see a single traffic appeal. It might be a question better suited for Captain Glasgow, but I'm wondering the last time there was a traffic appeal that of any nature that, if anyone has that history? It's just a curiosity question.
I've been in three of them in my tenure. It's usually the 72-hour parking.
Oh, microphone, please. The microphone is...
72-hour parking. And there was one, well, it was related to parking on the Fourth of July. So they get a ticket and then they want to appeal it and then they come to us.
So it does happen.
It does.
Councilmember Bowles.
Thank you Deborah. And I just want to say what a pleasure it is serving on this committee with you and the great people on it. And 20 years, wow.
Hey, Fred's been on there for 40 years.
I didn't know that. We need to have a little contest and some prizes. No, but I appreciate, I mean, these are such important issues that, you know, require a deep understanding of the city and good communication. And so it's really important to have that continuity and I really appreciate the long I thought I'd use this opportunity, since this is communicating to the public, to talk, we use the acronyms, but not necessarily explain them all the time and just how important the CERT program is. I went through similar training in San Francisco and the idea is that in a real emergency, a big earthquake or landslide or whatever, our emergency personnel, our fire and police are going to the really bad events, right? But we need people in each of the neighborhoods who can be there to assess in their own neighborhoods, you know, first aid, search and rescue, putting out a fire, you know, some basic skills, you know, as we wait for the emergency personnel. So it's just, it's such a vital program, especially for a city that's so spread out like ours is.
And Pacifica has over 350 CERT members, Community Emergency Response Training.
Yeah.
Which is great. And there's also the Map Your Neighborhood program that is still going on here and I believe our ex-council member, I'm blanking his mind, but it's where you kind of take emergency preparedness and bring it down to your street level. And so you meet with your neighbors and you just kind of map all that information. And I think it's this ongoing goal that we are trying to get it rolled out in all neighborhoods of Pacifica. So very vital, important programs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beer.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
20 years, yeah. I really wanted to thank you for those letters of support. Please know that they do not go unnoticed. As someone who is able to review the applications and actually score them, I read the letters and I really appreciate it. So please know that you helped us get funding and it's super appreciated.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I haven't had an opportunity to be liaison to this committee yet. I think there's a conflict, it meets the same night as something else or something. I don't know.
Yes, it does.
I'm looking forward to that opportunity in the very near future. Thank you for all you do.
And I would really love to give a shout out to Park Speeches and Rack who gave us a presentation at our last meeting where we found out about those wonderful buoys. That's just, and again, the cross work between all of our commissions is so vital and so we're going to pass out all the flyers at the Fog Fest. So thanks a lot.
Mayor Protem.
I attended once because, no, because the other two people couldn't attend. And I'm on the Emergency Services Council for the county. So some of our things overlap with some of your things and it's really nice to have these programs directly in our city instead of just through the county.
Absolutely.
And to hear that there are 350 CERT members is pretty amazing.
Yeah.
And thank you for all of the things that you do. It's all very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
The breadth of expertise that... The breadth of expertise that serves on your commission is another remarkable one. And, you know, all to the tune of keeping us safe. So it's, it's amazing that each of you have a truly unique and complimentary knowledge base. And so those conversations are really good to be a part of and listen to. I apologize that I didn't have a moment to say goodbye to you all as I transitioned to a different committee. It was a true joy and honor to be able to liaison for a couple of years. So thank you for being here tonight and thank you for all the work that the commission does. And do please send my regards.
Thanks.
So the next on the list is the Beautification Advisory Committee. And Gail Bennett Chair is who I have listed as speaking. And welcome.
Hi. Let's see how I do this time. Okay. My name is Gail Bennett and I am the current Chair for the Beautification Advisory Committee. There are seven members. We have two, one member that just started last week and one two months ago. And they were at a workday on Saturday along with Sue Beckmeyer. So I just want to give that shout out to Sue. And then our liaison with Public Works, Lisa Peterson and Gino Azerato and Michelle Thayer, who we would not know what to do without her. And like I said, our council liaison is Sue Beckmeyer. Is there a clicker somewhere that I'm supposed to be using? Do what? It says do not. Am I blind? And you're just this, right? Okay, so the Beautification Advisory Committee is the Keep Pacifica Beautiful, K-P-B mission, is to identify city-owned sites, which through sponsored plantings and the creation of public art will continue, contribute to community interest and pride along the main thoroughfares, in parks and around the beaches, implemented by means of safe work plans, sustainable gardening practices and collaborative funding sources. So the K-P-B practices utilize environmental-friendly landscape practices that include mulch, use of drought-tolerant, low-maintenance and native landscape materials, incorporate drip irrigation or water-efficient systems, such as the green bags that you're seeing on many of our trees, water-efficient systems in our landscape areas. This was adopted by BAC Drought Policy in 2015. Sites are prepped in spring and summer for planting in autumn months to maximize our rainy season. Sponsorship program that we have is sponsoring businesses, community organizations and individuals work with the BAC to design, prepare, plant and install irrigation in accordance with the K-P-B plan. Cover the cost of landscape and irrigation materials, agree to maintain the site for two years. The BAC will assist with design of the site and site development, assist with training of volunteers, assist in purchasing materials, install sponsorship signs. Some of our programs, Grace McCarthy Vista, Point or Outlook, depending on what map you're looking at. And this is sponsored by our Rotary Club of Pacifica. And we are, this is certainly if you've driven down Sharp Park recently, this is not what it looks like. We are preparing it for new plants, so we are getting ready to get rid of those weeds, if you've been up there. Also, we, the planters that are located at our community center. So in this slide, we have a picture on the right of the Pacifica Garden Club, their planter. And then we have some of their members working with BAC members doing the cleanup there. We are looking for community sponsors. So if anybody knows of a company or individuals that might be interested in sponsoring one of these planters, have them contact me. And Sue Beckmeyer and I were actively working on the Crespy Bio Swells on the north side, directly in front of Cabrillo School with the PTO of volunteers. It was a very fun event on Saturday. And this is from one of our past workdays. And we are looking for sponsors there. So the photograph that you're reviewing is on the south side. So on Kenny's Restaurant, right, on that side, and the gym. So if anybody would like to sponsor, please feel free to contact me. And the, our plan is to create an informational display sign that describes how a bio swell functions. And that will be mounted on the side that is closer to the school when we do that. The next one is the Lindemar Boulevard median at Highway 1. And the sponsor there is North Coast County Water District. It used to be, previously it was several businesses were doing it, but it was determined it was a little too, it's very unsafe right in the middle of Lindemar Boulevard. And this is the one that I'm probably the most proud of because it was my original project when I start, that I took over for Jenny Jakewood when she retired. And this is the Palmetto Street Skate Project. The sponsors are local businesses, community organizations and individuals. So the photograph on the right is Bob Bybee, who was just weeding the Lions Club bulb out. And then this, oops, did I go back? Okay, and then this is, we have successfully have all of the sites are adopted either by local businesses, individuals such as the people that you see on the, is it your left, I guess? Yeah, it's on your left. And then on the right are two of the BAC members. Next category is the Beautification Awards, which I came and gave the first one. And this is, the idea is to acknowledge people that live either are, have a residence or a business and show pride in their properties. And it goes on throughout the year. So the subcommittee that did this, we are doing it every quarter. So this is a residence that was for April of 2023. So you see the before and then the after photo. And we do have a setup, and this one, which is amazing if you've been at the north end of Pacifica across from Mizetti's. This is the commercial site of Jamie Wessel, the State Farm office there. And she's taken over and cleaned up that entire corner. The next subcommittee that we have is Public Art and Murals. And Cindy Abbott is on that, as well as Jenny Jakewood, Linda Jonas and Melinda Moses. And the biggest one that we're still working on is the Anza Pump Station. So these murals are done. And then the last. And this one is still a work in progress due to the work on the actual pump station itself. And then we have, which it was done by teenagers, this was the one that was done on Oceana Boulevard. And special thanks to all the BAC sponsors and volunteers, to Lisa Peterson, Gino Azerato, Michelle Thayer and the Public Works crews because they have just been amazing to work with. And of course, our city council member, Sue Beckmeyer. And I think I am done. Yes. Questions? Comments?
Councilmember Beer.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm curious, what, what does it take to be a sponsor?
Depends. Which, what area are you, so Palmetto is completely covered, which is amazing.
Is there somewhere I can find information about like costs? I'm curious for, for one of the organizations I work with.
I'm pretty sure it's on the BAC website.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. Or you, or you can email me and I can get it too.
Okay, yeah. It might be a good project for our youth coalition.
Thank you for everything, again. All of our committees are so important to the whole city as a whole. And I'm glad that everybody works together. And the, sorry, I don't even, the State Farm, if you go by today, it's amazing. All the, all of those plants are in bloom and it's just beautiful. And I thank you for giving them the award because they really did deserve it. It's, it's an incredible change. I drive past there several times a day.
Don't we all?
Thank you.
I drive by there all the time too. And I, and Jamie is wonderful and such a great addition to our community. And it's wonderful to see the recognition because it inspires other people to, to, to do the same with their businesses. And I just want to say how much I love all the murals in town and, you know, just on a foggy day, all the color and, you know, really all over town.
Cindy Abbott and crew.
But all the different groups and the partnerships that you've built, like with Design Tech High School and so forth. And, you know, that not only brings joy to us, but, but brings good public service and inspiration to the students as well. So thank you for all your work and Sue for all your work and all those pictures helping with the planting.
Gail, you're doing such a great job leading that group. It's, it's important and I agree about the art, the public art, the development of that policy that preceded my service on council. I think Cindy was involved in helping to craft that. I know Jenny Jakewood was. There is a great interest, I'll just, you know, spoiler alert. There's great interest on the part of a couple of the committee members right now to add to that, to what we're already doing and a lot of energy and interest. So it's really exciting to see. So thank you very much.
I had the opportunity to serve Dave Martinez in the checkout line the other day. And I cannot look at his face and not think of the word mulch. So thank you so much. And it occurs to me that a part of the importance of beautification boils down to mental health for our community. If we're driving around town, walking around town, biking around town, and it was a trash heap, on top of, you know, the war in Ukraine and the rising cost of gas and pick your political party, and then you have to stare at blight, it would not make for a community that at some point could function. And so that you exist means that we have space in our brains that we can breathe a little bit and process some of these ginormous heady issues going on in our world because we have the opportunity to breathe in our community. So thank you for all beautification does.
Thank you for noticing.
Economic Development Committee, I have down Sean Thompson. The chair will be giving the presentation. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello. Did you bring anyone else with you or?
Lauren just joined. You probably saw me chatting with her.
Absolutely.
She just joined.
And it's up to you, Lauren, whether or not you want to participate as an audience member or join them at the podium.
If you want to talk about pride, that would be awesome. Okay, all right. I'll give you this, I'll give you the signal.
Very good.
Okay. Perfect. And so who's advancing the slides?
If, try the clicker. If that doesn't work, then I'll advance the slide for you.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Okay. Can you hear me okay up there? Okay, so we have an awesome group and what I would like to say.
I can hear you okay, but I'm not sure if the folks at home can hear you. You might just angle the microphone a little closer to you just to make sure it goes through the airwaves.
Is that better, you think?
I think so. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I'm plenty loud, so that's typically not a problem. So first thing, here's our group on the EDC. Council Liaisons, Marion Sue and the broader city council. You've done a fantastic job of assembling this group. So I've been on the EDC now for several years. And I feel like at this point in time, we have more energy and excitement around our objectives than we've ever had. And so we're going to go through some of the things that we've done over the past year. But I think the first shout out is thank you for assembling this group. And also thank you to both Yulia and Alyssa. I saw Yulia in the back. So thank you to both of you for kind of being the glue that holds our group together because it's super important. So this is our crew and then I'll advance to the next slide. Perfect, thank you, Sarah. So what do we do at the EDC? So the way that I think about what we do at EDC is kind of three legs of a stool. And so the first thing that we do is want to promote Pacifica to out-of-town visitors and drive tourism to our city. The second thing that we want to do is provide assistance and support local businesses here in Pacifica because it's important that we have a vibrant business community. And then the last thing that we want to do is promote local businesses to the residents of the, of the city of Pacifica. And so that's really important as well. We want to make sure that we try to spend locally and stop retail leakage. And as we go through the things that we've accomplished over the past year, what you'll notice is hopefully the different events that, that we have put on and the different initiatives that we've had will align with these goals. Okay, so four kind of key things that, that happened this year. The first thing is that we concluded our involvement with the Shop Pacifica e-Gift Community Card Program. So we started that initiative and we'll get into it a little bit and recently handed it off to, to another group here in Pacifica. We kicked off our inaugural Blues and Brews Concert Series, which was a ton of fun and we'll talk about that as well. We helped coordinate the City of Pacifica's Pride Event. And so I thought that that was really cool, our involvement there. And Lauren, we'll talk about that in just a second. And we also kicked off an inaugural program we call Networking Night that was spearheaded by a, by a, a member of the EDC as well. So if we can go to the next slide. Okay, so first we'll talk about Shop Pacifica. And Sarah, if you wouldn't mind going, okay. So this is just some digital that was created for the program. What you'll notice with all the things that we've done is we have some really slick digital. And I have no idea where it's come from, you know, who's doing it. But with each event, we've, we've put together some really slick digital material, which I'm, which I'm really proud of. And so this was, this was in particular for the shop local card event. And if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So we assisted launching this program. And so the purpose of this slide is really just to tell you about where we were when we started, which was that it didn't exist, and then where we are today. So we started with 12 businesses in 2021. Today roughly 50 businesses are participating. And we again handed this program off to CDA in mid-2022. And the performance so far has been really, really good. So if you wouldn't mind advancing to the next slide. Really the only number, there are a number of numbers here. The only one that I really want to focus on is kind of in the bottom right there, the $56,000 number. So those are, that's the total amount of gifts that have been purchased using the e-gift card program. And as a reminder, in order to participate in this program, you need to be a Pacifica business. So all of the, all of the dollars that are part of this program are going to be going to local Pacifica businesses. And the program has been really, used really creatively. There was a teacher appreciation event that was put on and a number of other events. But the community has used it in a really creative way. And it's been great to kind of take part in trying to help some of these local businesses here in Pacifica. The next thing that I'll talk about is our Blues and Brews Concert Series. So here's the creative that I mentioned that just comes out of nowhere. So we partnered with a Pacifica Bike Park and they had a member of their team that put this together. And so it was a super fun event. And you may be wondering, you know, why did we put on a concert here in Pacifica? And so really it was a test case to try to understand if folks, if residents of our community would be interested in attending an event like this. And so we wanted it to be a few things. We wanted it to be supported by local businesses. That was really important. And so we worked with several local breweries and we worked with several local restaurants in order to provide the food for the event. And so it was a little bit of a test case. We, we started advertising the event only 10 days prior to the date of the event. So that is very short. If you know anything about events, you start advertising well before 10 days. And we estimate that approximately 500 people attended the event. So we felt like it was a great test case and something that we want to, that we want to continue into the future. And it was phenomenal coverage for the Pacifica Bike Park, which is the organization, the nonprofit that we partnered with. And so we sold over $5,000 in beer and they sold a ton of t-shirts as well. So we thought it was an overall a great success. We've got a few pictures, Sarah, if you want to advance here. A great event for the community. You can see dogs, kids, our local nonprofits talking about their objectives. You can see dogs, kids, our local nonprofits talking about their objectives and what they're trying to achieve, some of the local businesses here. And then Avram, who has a bluegrass band and is phenomenal, lives here in Pacifica and we had a lot of fun listening to him and some of his family and members play that day. So, so next we want to talk about the city of Pacifica's Pride Event. Get up here.
Hi, Council. As many of you, hopefully all of you are in attendance, we had our Pride Event Second Annual on June 3rd. It was a week and a half ago. It was quite successful, even more successful than we could have imagined. We had so many local business owners, we can talk more about that, but about 1,000 attendees. We shut down Palmetto. We had 10, more than 10 businesses and to be honest, we started quite late as well. So, if we start earlier, next year we'll get even more. Tons of local nonprofits and community groups. It was very focused on family, family-friendly activities and support. We raised over, we actually raised over $20,000 for Coast Pride, giving a surplus of $4,000 for the organization. And we had a lot of small pop-ups and a lot of great, along Palmetto, and then a lot of great media coverage, which actually brought people from out of town to this event. So, we have some pictures. There you go. Christine, Pirate of Manner. I threw that in there. You can see everyone was having a great time, very, very family-friendly, very invested. There's the police chief, the community tabling event. Next slide, please. Oh, that was all.
So, what I'm partially so excited, I'm excited about a number of things. One of the things that I'm so excited about is all the different events that we put on were spearheaded by individuals. And so, there is no hierarchical, top-down, hey, we have to do this and who, who are the people that are going to accomplish it? Folks really pick up things that they're passionate about and they drive them to the finish line. And so, Lauren, this is a classic example of, of her and Brendan picking up this event and driving to the finish line, which is super fun to see. So, the next event that we've start, that we've, we've started with this past year is what we call our Networking Night. And Greta Seeglock put this event on. And really the idea is just how do we help local businesses and how do we connect them with resources that they, where they can be successful? And so, what we did with this event is we partnered with the Renaissance Center and the San Mateo Small Business Development Center to, to really, again, try to help local businesses and also people that were just aspiring to start a business. So, they came to, to sip some wine. Everyone got free glass of wine, which always helps start a conversation and, and really just talk about business and starting a business in Pacifica. And that concludes our presentation. So, if you, if there are questions, I'm happy to answer any of those.
Mayor Protem.
I also served on that committee for many years. We, I'm going to say the same thing I said to the other committee. We didn't nearly do as many things as you did. So, thank you for doing all these things. We did a few things, but you're doing a lot more and I can see it. I mean, the Pride Parade was amazing. There were so many people there and Brews and Blues, I went there, too. I didn't do this Networking Night. I was probably at another meeting. But thank you so much and to all of your committee.
Councilmember Beer.
Oh, my gosh, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be with you guys in a room. Really, the energy in this committee is like palpable and it's so fun and people get along really well and they're just excited to do the work. And so, that just creates really good outcomes all the way around. And so, I've learned so much from you and I just appreciate it so much. The Shop Pacifica is great. I was able to give 45 Shop Pacifica cards to our students and they were like, what's this? They're like, look, and then they saw the list of all the businesses and they're like, oh, cool. So, it went from what's this to cool.
Good.
So, it's pretty good.
It's good to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowles.
I just want to thank you for all the work that, that you're doing to get our name out there, to bring people here, to bring money to our city, which we desperately need as we're talking about our budget later tonight. I've attended your events, too. The Blues and Brews was super fun. I was out there dancing and the one comment I heard from some people on social media afterwards, I didn't realize you only had 10 days. That's incredible, you know, to, to, to get the word out. But a lot of people were just like, oh, I didn't know about that, you know? And, and we're really sad not to have been able to participate. And so, one question I have for you and I, I thought I heard someone was working on it, but as a citywide calendar of all the different events and performances and so forth, that we can more broadly share, you know, to, to our residents, but also to our visitors. I don't know if that's something you're working on. But before I take, stop talking, Pride was really fun and yeah, thank you for all of that. And such an important thing to, to bring this joy along with, you know, celebration of our diversity. That's a message we really want to be conveying. So, it's, it's just so important. And you have a networking event on Thursday. I have it on my calendar at 3 o'clock. So, you should tell people about that.
We have a, we have an event, an event this Thursday and it's similar to the Networking Night in that we're just trying to help local, local businesses and connect them to resources. So, it will be, I believe at 3 o'clock. So, instead of an evening event, we're trying it earlier in the day. But it will be a similar format in terms of having some local resources to connect with local Pacifica businesses.
Okay. And that's at 540 Crespe.
Thank you. You should, it sounds like you need to join our committee as well. This is perfect. Free advertising.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I agree with Councilmember Beer. This is a really fun group to be with. You're just, your energy is so high and I'm always, I guess because mine isn't that high sometimes, I marvel at the, the ability and the choice that you make and I appreciate it so much. You know, your, your early and, and rising career professionals, you have two babies or more at home. You have a lot going on in your lives and you take the time and really bring high-quality thought to how to address some of these issues in Pacifica. And it's really, really welcome. So, I'm, I'm so grateful to you and looking forward to the, the next round.
Thank you.
As I've been listening to the various committees and commissions, it occurs to me that there are so many places where they overlap and intertwine. And economic development is what facilitates all of us and every commission, every committee being able to do the work is that we have the means by which to keep it going. And so, thank you for doing the work of bringing those means to us that we can continue to have the Pacifica we wish to have. I, too, attended the Pride Event. It was a wonderful event. It occurred to me an old David Byrne line from a song, which was his way of improvising something from some commercial at some point he had watched, but what's good for business is good for us all. And that's the truth. When we're really putting our heart into the cultivation of that which will facilitate us, then we are facilitated by heart and robustly at that. So, thank you for all the work that EDC is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last, but certainly not least, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, Arlene Patton, the chair, and anyone else who you'd like to invite to join you.
Is, is this, is this working or?
Arlene, if the clicker doesn't work, just let me know next slide.
Okay, great. Thanks, Sarah. Hi, Rebecca. It is really wonderful to be here. I'd like to say that we may be last, but I'm hoping we're the best here. This is personally my favorite slide. I love looking at this map from our general plan, looking at the green that is so much of our town. We have nearly 50% of our landmass as dedicated open space. And while I can't take credit for much of this, I am so proud to be, you know, following in a really wonderful crowd that, that led this town to be what it is. So, I want to acknowledge the people who came before us. Next slide, please. Benefits of open space. Think especially during COVID, we understood how valuable our open space was for our own mental health. Tourism and economic growth. I know that's a push-pull sometimes during our super blooms. Our natural beauty boosts property values, which is again, I think something that cuts both ways at this point. And open space buffers and mitigates the impacts of climate change. Next slide. Our purpose, this is our resolution 44-2015. These are the issues that are related to our mission, natural areas that are proposed to be dedicated to the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, lands that are proposed to be dedicated open space, parklands that are under the jurisdiction of the GG NRA, areas operated by San Mateo County Parks Department, and ways in which these areas can contribute to the economy of the city. The Open Space Task Force Report, also known as our Bible, analyzed 51 properties within Pacifica, led to the preservation of open spaces such as Maury Point, Pedro Point Headlands, Malagra, and others, led to new trail developments, led to the establishment of Pacifica Land Trust, remains the basic reference for OSPEC, and finds that the city should investigate methods of funding open space acquisition, including bonds. And OSPEC may advise applicants on properties listed in the Open Space Task Force Report and on other open space issues. What we did this year, we have requested from you to review our 2015 resolution at the city's goal-setting meeting. The city, you all have agreed to take a look at not only ours, but other committee resolutions. And we want to thank you for moving that along. OSPEC's a conduit to the community. I mean, we stay engaged in many different ways, but one thing that we did help, help facilitate was discussion about what's going on in the Maury Point area, both during COVID, but now even when there's, you know, our super blooms. We maintain relationships with other organizations such as Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, talk about funding and other open space management issues. And then the other thing that we did was provided feedback to the applicant of the development project at 570 Crespe Drive. We responded to multiple concerns from the public regarding the degradation of the newly-named Ani Trail on Cattle Hill due to historical neglect, increased use during the COVID-19 emergency, and weather conditions. Also, this has really been an issue associated with social media because when something's fun, everybody's got to spread the word. So, we have a lot more traffic on all of our open space just because of that. I get to change this. We held four community workdays, last one being last Saturday, along with multiple one-on-one workdays with more than 60 community volunteers. There's an estimated 300 hours of volunteer time over, we've got more weeks than that now. We're really proud of this. It's new for us. The response has been wonderful. I got to say, it's not just committee members. We have a very, very dedicated volunteer who's probably been put over more than half of those 300 hours and by himself. With community volunteers, we documented over 50 locations of improvements on the Ani Trail using flagging and waypoints. Next slide. So, this isn't the best picture. It's a little fuzzy here. But if you take a look at all of those green dots or all those dots, they were all red before we started. These were turns, erosion, mud pits, if you will, all up on the Ani Trail. And as of last Saturday, I think we had another three that went green. So, we're definitely making progress. Next slide. So, these are the kind of conditions we were looking at. And, you know, this is the, the work in progress. Could you go back, Sarah? What happens when the trail gets this bad is it, you get even worse traffic problems here in terms of people being able to pass one another. There's always the issue with drainage going off the hill and wherever else it goes from there. And, you know, it was just, we, we've talked about pride in our community and this was just something that seemed like such a sad thing, a new name for the trail and this is what it looks like. Next slide. So, here's a demonstration of the type of construction. This is all handwork, putting in rock, digging trenches, and sometimes you're having to do these two or three times before you get it, get it right. Next slide. This is what it looks like now. That's that same mud pit. And this probably was one of the worst ones on the trail, but there were a number of them. So, I'm impressed with the, the speed that we're doing this, the enthusiasm. I want to give a shout out to a couple people. We have a committee, committee member Ian McDermott, who is leading a lot of this. And then our local volunteer, Aaron Reeve, who's been really the muscle behind a lot of this. And it's, it's just a really wonderful thing that we've got, a group of volunteers are working so hard. Next slide. This was our first workday. As you can see, it was not a particularly pleasant day to be out there playing in the mud, but as Aaron will point out, but that's where you see how it drains, you know? And again, all hand tools. One of our fun things was even though we have trails for, tools for tamping and that kind of stuff, the most fun was one of our volunteers who acted as a human pogo stick to tamp down the dirt. Next slide, please. And this is another thing that I'm just really, really proud of. You know, when you're, when you're in the hiking community, we aren't always very kind to each other in terms of mountain biker, hiker interface. And I am so very proud of how we've got this group of folks that could be competitors who are working collaboratively. And it's something that we as a community should be really proud of. Next slide. This was, let's see, not Saturdays, but the one before that. So, you can see, got a good group of people. What I was really happy about last Saturday is we had three 16-year-olds that came out. So, working hard to get the next generation engaged. And no, not everybody got credit for community service. They were volunteers, true volunteers. Next slide, please. And this is another one of the things that we're proud of. This is the, our preservation award. Was wonderful to be able to give Jim Sullivan, who served on our committee for eight years, one of the most enthusiastic committee members ever. I was sad that he left. At least he's only in Half Moon Bay, so he's still doing lots of trails for the county and really a, a mentor and inspiration to me. Next slide. And before I thank my committee members, I also want to reach out to staff. We've had some great support, you know? Planning is our, our official. We've had some great support, you know, planning is our, our official liaison. But I also wanted to give a shout out to Public Works. They've been supporting us in a number of different ways, and I wanted to acknowledge them too. This is our, this is our crew. And I, another thing I guess I should mention is that we have five committee members that have all come on in the last year. So we've got a lot of new blood, and I'm very, very pleased about that. Any questions?
I'm not sure I have any questions, but I just want to say thank you. Obviously, looking at the map, but just walking around town, we, I mean, a lot of us are here because of the open space. That's what has drawn us to Pacifica. It's such an oasis in such a busy metropolitan area. And thank you, all of your work and leadership on this committee to not only protect, but, but maintain and ensure our trails, you know, are available for, for all our generations and are safe. A lot of, a lot of your work. I've climbed some of those steep ones on the Ani Trail before your work, and I'm looking forward to going back now. I've slipped down one of them, actually. I mean, it, it was dangerous. And, yeah, especially with COVID, like you said, we've, but we've been discovered, but that's, and there's good and bad, but, but it's bringing, it's bringing Pacifica and putting it on the map and, and increasing our revenues and the sustainability of the city. And it's something we can really be proud of. And, and I asked, and we're going to hear your, and talk about your, your mandate and so forth this summer, and I really look forward to participating in that. Thank you, Arlene.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I want to thank you for working on the Maury Point issue. I, as I looked at the charter bullet points that you had on your presentation, I, I forget how much intertwined OSPAC is, you know, to, to a name with GG NRA and with that liaison role on behalf of the city. It's still a problem. We're still having issues. And I, so I feel like, you know, I'm not sure what the next steps are to keep that constant communication, let's say, and action, really. Because, you know, and how we can support that, how staff can support it, I don't know. But I'm hearing from residents, and, and I know you are. So I, I agree, being discovered is, has some benefits and has some not benefits, but hopefully our partners can, you know, help out with resolving some of those concerns. The on-trail work is beautiful. I can't wait to see it myself and go look at it in person. It looks fantastic. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowles, did you have a?
I forgot. There was one more thing I wanted to say that was actually not mentioned in your slides, but another wonderful aspect of your work on this committee is, is looking out for the creatures that we share this, this land with as well. And I remember being in a, in a meeting, I think it was in the last year, about a property near a creek and just talking about the setbacks and making sure that there's wildlife corridors and so forth, you know, as, as they move across our land. And so just want to thank you for that also.
Councilmember Beer.
Hi, Arlene, thank you so much. And for many things. For starters, I want to thank you for hearing the people in Fairway Park and for pushing us, you know, to meet with Caltrans, and then we're met with Caltrans again, and you know how long things take. But just know that there's always movement, and that's because of OSPAC. So I want to thank you for that. And then I want to thank you for also pushing us to review the charters. And so, you know, we're getting, getting, working on that. We have an ad hoc committee that's creating a survey, and we're going to be putting that out pretty soon. So I really look forward to hearing the feedback from all the different committees and commissions. But again, that came from you. And so, thank you so much. And thank you to the super volunteer. I don't know your name, but right on.
Mayor Protam.
Again, everyone working together. I attended one of your meetings, so I got a little feel for what you do. And you were about to go fix the trails when I went, and it was really interesting to, to hear about it, but it was even better to see the pictures today of what they started with and what they ended. Because to me, that's amazing. You guys just do a great job, and thank you for everything.
And I get to be the fortunate one to serve as a liaison this year, which is my distinct and sincere honor. So thank you for your presentation. It was lovely. There have been a number of comments about Maury Point since OSPAC so far has most robustly heard them, and I will be surprised if some of the folks from the neighborhood don't come to the next OSPAC meeting. As I was listening to a lot of the presentations tonight, I thought that occurred to me, and I don't know about the viability, but city manager, I just want to kind of throw this your way to see if it might be a good idea. There seems to be a lot of overlap between OSPAC, emergency preparedness, and PBNR. Perhaps a joint study session would be in order to see if new innovation can be concocted somewhere in that arena. Again, just an idea for you to chat with me about later. I was so happy to be at that first workday, and I have been looking for an opportunity to go to a subsequent one, which so far I haven't found. I'm busy on occasion, so I apologize for not getting there. But it's been really amazing to see that work. Erin, you're a beast, in the greatest way possible. And more to it, to see the initiative that OSPAC took in saying, there's an issue, and rather than complaining to our under-resourced staff and turning our wheels, hey, we have hands, we have legs, we can find tools, let's go and do something about it. And it, I think, is a model going forward of the kind of work that can be done with really, I think, minimal staff support and the consistency with which it's been done. It's, it's extraordinary to see how much work has been done in such a small amount of time, and I look forward to seeing what that happens as it continues. I've been talking to our county supervisor, Ray Mueller, at the last OSPAC meeting. The idea was sparked as you were talking about, well, where are we going to post the thing to let people know this is happening? And I thought, well, you know, I have in my mind that really nice big log sign over in San Pedro Valley Park. Hey, Ray, can you throw some Measure K funds and get us a sign now that, you know, we have that nice parking lot in that area? And Ray seemed very open to the idea, so I'll, I'll talk to OSPAC at the next meeting about what that might mean. But that's an idea I had on how to start augmenting that further. And as was mentioned before, because of OSPAC, we are reviewing the charters of all the committees and the commissions, which is an amazing opportunity to see where we can update everything. So again, thank you, OSPAC, for leading the way and making sure that, you know, y'all are at the forefront of figuring out how to troubleshoot those nuances that are so important to us all. Thank you.
I, I have one more comment that I, I failed to thank some people. You know, our success isn't just because of us. We've had a lot of support from the Pacifica Land Trust, who's lent us tools, has pretty much given us carte blanche in terms of whatever we need. They volunteered their volunteer coordinator for our first day. I also want to call out the Pacific Beach Coalition, who helped us with a, both moral support as well as some advice and, and help. And, you know, we, we can't do this by ourselves. We're really a community, and we share community resources, and we're really grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I'll open up the public comment. If anybody from the public wishes to address any of the committees or commissions, I have no yellow cards currently, but you're welcome to come up and fill in after the fact if you'd like. If anyone is watching at home, you can dial 669-900-6833, webinar ID 811-5615-8241, and press star nine to raise your hand. When you're called upon by either your screen name or the last four digits of your phone number, it's star six to unmute. Please state your full name for the record at the beginning, and I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining of the three minutes allotted. And of course, please mute any background sounds. Emily, do we have anyone on the phone line who wishes to speak?
There are no raised hands.
In that case, we will close public comment and take a recess until our regular meeting begins at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everybody. Amazing work.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, June 12th, regular city council meeting of the City of Pacifica. The time is now 7:03. Quick reminder, if anyone hasn't placed a parking pass on your dashboard, you will find them at the base of the stairwell on the door. Just grab a parking pass and stick it in your dash and come on back. That way, it ensures you won't get ticketed. City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowles?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Present.
Mayor Protam Vaterlos?
Here.
Mayor Big Stick?
Present. Do we have meeting notes?
Tonight's meeting is being held in person with alternative ways to view the meeting via cable TV 26, livestream at www.pacifica.gov/livestream, or via Zoom with the Zoom, with the Zoom link and webinar ID provided in the agenda. And comments will be taken in person and also via Zoom.
Thank you very much. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rameh Tushaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rameh Tushaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rameh Tushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rameh Tushaloni peoples. Can we please have the salute to the flag led by Councilmember Beckmeyer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have one special presentation tonight. I'd like to invite Anita Reese, the Executive Director of the Peninsula, Pacifica Resource Center, to come up and give the annual report. I said that because I have on my mind that PCE just released their e-bike program for those looking to get an e-bike, and of course, that might be a good resource.
Okay. So, let's see. Oh, did I do that, or did you? Okay. Just kidding. So thank you so much for having me tonight. I just wanted to let you all know that we have been making some changes at PRC. We went through a strategic planning process and came up with a new vision and mission. Every person in our community lives with dignity and has the opportunity to thrive is our new vision. And our new mission is to support the resilience and well-being of families and individuals in Pacifica and along, and along the coast. So for nearly 50 years, we've been providing these services to Pacifica. And together, like we've, Armato says, neighbors helping neighbors. Let's see. Okay. Do I point here? There. Oh, cool. So the, the, we ended up coming up with four strategic priorities. So one of the things that I found really interesting is after several interviews and discussion with staff and board, one of the things that we felt was really important was to educate our community leaders and also raise awareness about compassion towards our vulnerable community members. I think that's something that we've always done, but in, to purposefully do it was something new for us. The second is to expand our facilities to integrate existing and new programs. So in a lot of ways, that's continuing to do our current services, continuing to provide our current services as well as expand them as we find unmet needs.
And Anita?
Yes.
What's the range on this strategic plan?
The range?
So it, it says 2023 to?
Twenty. It's three to five years. We started off as a three-year, but more than likely it'll be extended for the fourth and fifth year, but we leave that open.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, for sure. Our third priority is to, again, expand existing services and offer new services as we continue to see unmet or emerging needs. And then the fourth is really to continue to strengthen our networks. So part of that is, part of that is strengthening our, our relationships with government agencies as well as community partners, something that we've done, but not necessarily spent, we're sort of like, we are the core agency in Pacifica, so we tend to take it for granted that folks know who we are and that we know who they are. We refer to other partners all the time, but really trying to come up with ways that maybe we offer space for folks to offer services onsite. It's a little limited based on our current space, but our goal would be to, as we expand our facilities, to find bigger spaces and be able to maybe offer regular space for folks to offer services. Mental health is one of the big ones. We just, we refer out all the time, but it would be wonderful to have a clinician onsite. And, and even maybe students who can provide and increase our capacity to serve more people. So over the last year, we've assisted one in eight Pacifica families. So these are some of the big numbers. We, last year, we provided 104,000, we, we provided groceries that benefited 104,000 people in Pacifica. So this is duplicated. These are folks who are coming in on a regular basis. When you think about, that was kind of core, a core time during COVID, we were providing groceries on a weekly basis to almost everybody who needed them. So that was one of the ways that we really increased the number of folks that we serve for groceries. And then we continue to, one of our biggest focuses is preventing homelessness, and that is by providing emergency financial assistance to help people stay in their homes. We know that if we provide that support on the front end, they're likely, they're more likely to stay housed than if they become sheltered or if they go into the shelter program. And I'm going to just go to the next one because I go into a little bit more details. So as I mentioned, 104,000 Pacificans benefited from our grocery programs. That's a 418% increase from the year before. So the year before, we provided 25,000 folks with services. And that was primarily through bimonthly drive-throughs, weekly deliveries. And then, of course, we opened up our pantry and were allowed, we shifted to a choice pantry, but for a while, we were packing groceries for them, especially during the kind of height of COVID. So we're, we're happy to be back to that choice option, not just in our pantry, but also in our grocery distribution programs. We also provided tax preparation and savings program. I think a lot of times folks forget that that's something that we do. Last year, we provided taxes to 202 folks, this year, 227 folks, and we're still offering tax appointments now. But combined, last year and the year before, we bimonthly, drive-throughs, weekly deliveries. And then, of course, we opened up our pantry and were allowed, we shifted to a choice pantry, but for a while, we were packing groceries for them, especially during the kind of height of COVID. So we're happy to be back to that choice option, not just in our pantry, but also in our grocery distribution programs. We also provided tax preparation and savings program. I think a lot of times, folks forget that that's something that we do. Last year, we provided taxes to 202 folks, this year, 227 folks, and we're still offering tax appointments now. But combined, last year and the year before, we, I'm sorry, last year and this year, we helped folks get $665,000 in refunds, which they are primarily going to be spending it in this community. At the same time, we saved them $88,000 in tax preparation fees. And of those folks, 19% to 20% saved some portion of their refunds if they were getting a refund. So again, we take this opportunity to not just help people reduce their costs and increase their income, but we also try to take that opportunity to help people think about long-term savings so that, you know, if they have a small nest egg of money, maybe they don't have to take out that payday loan or get behind on their rent because they can just borrow from themselves. And then, for our holiday and our holiday and other seasonal programs, oops. Okay, thank you. We do our Holiday Joy Program. In 2021, we served 160 children, 2022, 191, and this year, our goal is 200 or more. For Thanksgiving, 481 in 2021, 516 in 2022, and we'll continue to provide that support. We basically, we really try hard not to turn anybody away, so even if we can't give them the full program, we give them something. And then, we also provided back-to-school backpacks and school supplies in the form of gift cards so that folks could go and purchase them on their own. For 159 students, our goal this year is 200, and we're in the process of signing up people now. We should have a wish list posted in the next week or so, so if anybody wants to provide support for our back-to-school program, that allows us to spend those funds on something else if we get them, get backpacks and gift cards. We are increasing the amount of gift card, the amount that we give in gift cards. Last year, we gave $30. I think we're moving it up to 40 or 50 just because of the higher cost of everything nowadays. Go ahead, Sarah. Thanks. As I mentioned, emergency financial assistance is one of our core things. You can almost see all of our services as a way to help people stay housed. Last year, we helped 124 Pacifica families access nearly $1.5 million in emergency financial assistance. Those went to people who owned homes in Pacifica and hopefully was reinvested in this community. That was primarily through our own funds that we have, that we get through a variety of sources, and also through housing is key. We continue to provide this support through, on, through phone appointments if possible, just to make it easy because not everybody can make it to our office with all of the documents. And we also have an online application that we started during COVID, but we're continuing it just to try to make things as easy as possible for folks to access those resources. And then our homeless services, last year, we provided 284 showers to folks. We continue to be the entry point to county homeless services, including shelter, but also the housing pool for folks who have been chronically homeless. They can be matched with subsidies. And so the best way to do that, or the only way to get access to those resources, is to go through coordinated entry, which PRC can refer people to. Last couple of years, we started our unhoused-on-the-coast outreach work. So last year, we provided outreach, street outreach, so we go out into the field, connect with folks who are unhoused, to 147 folks. And we referred them. One of our primary goals is to get them through the coordinated entry system so they have access to county services and also connect them with health services and other homeless services. We provide a smaller subset of folks, Housing-Centered Case Management. Those are folks who we, well, we provide Housing-Centered Case Management with everybody, for everybody, because we are trying to help people return to housing. And so a combination of Housing-Centered Case Management and our street outreach, nearly 40% of the folks that we outreach to return to housing. Thirty-one percent, 31 folks went, returned to permanent housing, and 25 returned, entered into shelter. Which I will say that generally across the county, it's around 30%. So the fact that we have been able to increase that by 10% is significant and something that we've been building on. If you look back for, over the course of all of our unhoused-on-the-coast outreach work, which was three years, that percentage is actually 60%. So one of the things that you all have invested in is the Pacifica Safe Parking Permit Program. So it launched on June 29th, 29th of last year, so we're just coming into one full year of service. We started off with eight permitted parking spaces, we're now at nine as of October of 2022. So to date, 20 folks have been served from 15 households, and they've been temporarily housed. We currently have nine folks in the program right now. Two returned to housing in January, one is currently matched with a housing subsidy, and the other six are working towards their housing plans. Not everybody gets a subsidy, and because of that, we need to come up with strategies not just related to getting a subsidy. Everybody wants a subsidy, there just aren't enough around. Four spaces, as you all know, are still on hold due to Coastal Commission appeals, and we have exited three folks from the program because of noncompliance. So, but we work with folks to try to return to the program. One has returned, one's moved, and another one is in the process of possibly coming back in, but they have abandoned their motorhome and is currently couch surfing, trying to figure out what they're going to do next. Couple of other things that I wanted to mention about the folks who are in the program. What was interesting to me is that 43% are between 55 and 69. Another 43% are between the ages of 27 and 39, and 14% are 18 to 26. So when you think about that, these are folks who are much older, and they may have some challenges with their income, right? And primarily, let's see, 86% of the folks who are in the program have been in their motorhome one year or longer. Only 14% have been in six to nine months, and 86% are because of the high rents. That's the reason. They all have a connection to Pacifica, nearly half are from Pacifica, the other half have family or work here, and that's why they're here. So other PRC services, we provide baby and youth programs. If somebody needs a car seat, we can provide them resources to go and purchase one. You can't use used car seats. Formula, diapers, baby wipes, bus passes for youth, and then we try to connect folks, families to summer youth programs. We also provide transportation assistance generally, primarily in bus passes and tokens, but we can do car repairs if it's linked to maintaining their housing. And then we also offer laundry services, clothing, medical assistance, connection to medical assistance. We don't provide that onsite. And then we also have a vet that comes out once a month to provide, you know, wellness care for their animals, primarily vaccinations, but other things as well, which has been really, really helpful as well. And then just a couple of other things. We are currently at 12 members of our board. Our goal is to have 15, so if anybody is interested in participating in our board, we are looking for three more folks. Love to have them. We are planning to have an in-person Palma Palooza on September 30th, so if you get on our board now, you get to go to the Palma Palooza, I mean, you can go anyways, but, you know, something else. We currently have 14 staff, 13 and a half full-time equivalents. Fortunately, we have lost one of our unhoused-on-the-coast outreach specialists, the person who primarily worked in this, on the South Coast, but we do have our Pacifica person. So if anybody is interested in learning more, they can go to our website. And then, over the next year, our goal is to expand our grocery rescue and delivery program. We are currently looking at getting a warehouse space that would be a place to stage our food that's coming in from grocery, grocery rescue, well, grocery stores that we pick up groceries from. And then we'd be able to distribute them out to either community partners who need the extra food, or we would be packaging those items and then delivering them. And then that would increase our capacity to have volunteers, which is part of why we're relaunching our volunteer program in a more substantive way with monthly orientation starting in August. And then, our homeless outreach, we, there's been a little bit of a stall in expanding to Pescadero, so this year, we are continuing to plan, we're continuing to expand in Pescadero. I believe that was my last slide. Yeah. More information, you can contact me. We do have, as I mentioned, our unhoused-on-the-coast person who is primarily in Pacifica, Sandyata. That is his cell phone number. You can text, call. He is working Monday, Sunday through Thursday. So he will be available Sunday through Thursday. The other outreach specialists we're looking for will be working Tuesday through Saturday. But that is his cell phone number, so if you have, or you see anybody who is unhoused in Pacifica, you can text him or message him or email that email address, and we'll get out to that, to that person as quickly as we can. Catherine is our Safe Parking Permit Program Coordinator, and that is also her cell phone and her email address, and she can also be reached if there's anything that's coming up. And of course, you can always reach out to me or Madina, our direct services manager. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Anita. Council, do we have questions? Do we have comments? Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Hi, Anita. Thanks so much for that update. I always marvel at what you're able to accomplish, and I'm very happy to hear about the goal of expanding your facilities, something I've been rah-rah-ing for, for a while. I have a question about the grocery rescue and delivery program.
Sure.
Is this currently affiliated with our edible food out of the, making sure edible food does not get into the waste stream?
Yes.
There is a connection happening?
Yes, oh, absolutely. We've been doing our grocery rescue before that ordinance went into place, and so we are the service provider in Pacifica that can collect any of those items. I will share that we're having some challenges with our, with the generators because it's not yet enforced by the county and the state, but we are expecting that to shift over the next year because it's starting to get into that phase. So we continue to reach out to generators to try to get them onboard with us, but we've had some challenges. We still get a lot of food, but we want to be able to pick up more, which is why the warehouse will be really important.
Right. And so you have a warehouse space now, or you're looking to get one?
We have a potential warehouse space. It's a little bigger than we need, but we're still looking.
Right, okay. That's really all I had at this point, but thanks again.
For sure, absolutely.
Mayor Protem?
I always marvel at the numbers of people that you serve. It's just incredible. And the one in eight, and we hear it, but it's amazing, and when you see the numbers.
For sure.
So, it's amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bowles?
Yeah, and I highlighted the 412 people that you've prevented from being homeless. You know, we think that, we have a large homeless population in terms of county percentages that I know we're all eager to work towards and reducing, but these are real people that you've helped. And, you know, I've gotten to know Suzanne well over, more over the last few years as, you know, as a nurse who worked with this population, just the real health effects and of not having permanent housing. And so, so thank you. I do want to ask, so besides the warehouse, what space needs do you have otherwise? You talked about expanding from where you're now.
Yeah. Well, if you've ever come to our office, we use every single space available. We've gotten really creative. I was telling the staff that our goal this year is coordination because we have to coordinate when somebody uses one space or another. So we're definitely looking for just more space and ideally all in one place. So in an ideal world, we would either have a building, build a building, get some property to really like have the warehouse and the food capacity all in one space, along with service provision and partner space and potentially, you know, if not affordable housing, a combination of affordable as well as temporary or transitional housing for folks, so that we can sort of address all of those needs with the folks that we're working with. Because there is no shelter on the, there is a shelter on the coast, but there's no shelter in Pacifica, and so being able to offer something like that would be, would be significant.
Okay, great. And, and those are important things for us to know as we're talking to, you know, other politicians for money and, and affordable housing developers too. So thank you so much.
For sure.
I just wanted to follow up with one question for the city manager. Do we have an update on when the four spaces might be heard by the Coastal Commission?
No, we don't have any indication from Coastal Commission when they may wish to take that up.
Councilmember Beer?
Thank you. Hi, Anita. Thank you so much for everything. You know, when I think about the Resource Center, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the Resource Center. You helped me in a time of great need for myself and my daughter, and so I'm always really grateful for that, and I don't forget that. You were talking about the possibility of getting a mental health practitioner or something, and so maybe we can talk offline about our program at Daily City Youth Health Center because we're connected with USF and other graduate schools, and there's an abundance of interns, and so maybe we can connect about that piece.
Absolutely.
Super qualified behavioral health interns.
Absolutely.
The savings program, please, people understand that that little bit of savings, it, you know, it doesn't bring all the security in the world, but it brings pride, right? Like, I have a savings account, and for people who work and live check by check, you don't have a savings account, so that program is really important. So thank you for that. I look forward to seeing the wish list because we can definitely get that out there. And I know at one point, there were some needs that you had for the pantry. Is that still something we can talk about, or?
Yeah, I, we have been having a really difficult time keeping our pantry stocked, which is part of why we want to have this warehouse space, because second harvest provides a significant amount of food to our pantry, but we don't have a lot of storage space, and that's really where the disconnect is. So our hope is, once we have this warehouse space, we'll be able to get a bigger delivery and then continue to fill our pantry as needed. So we are always in need of canned proteins. I think canned fruits was one of the other things, snack-type foods that have pop tops, heartier soups, things like that are always things that we need to have on hand. I don't remember if there's other things, but those are usually the core. Peanut butter is another one. Second harvest is getting less of those kinds of things because they are also having a really challenging time purchasing items because they're so expensive. So we're rotating the kind of proteins that we get in, so we aren't getting peanut butter like we used to. And then jelly is always one of those things that you take for granted, but jelly is awesome too, so it'd be really great to have some jelly and peanut butter, not just one or the other. But if we had to choose, we'd take peanut butter over the jelly.
Okay, yeah.
Just because of the protein.
Thank you. And then our Safe Parking Permit Program, thank you so much for that. It's really wonderful to see that folks are moving through it. I know how long it takes for people to get housed, and it's really hard to get those vouchers, you know, that like golden ticket, which just, they don't exist as much as they used to, and so every little bit counts, and so the more that we can talk about that, the better. And I've been, I feel like I've been answering more questions about the program lately. So that's good. People are asking questions instead of making assumptions, and so I think that's really important too, so.
I should mention too, just for folks who, who struggle with paying rent in general, that the county's Moving to Work voucher program, folks can sign up for it at rentcafe. I think it's rentcafe.gov or .com, but it's at the Department of Housing's website. I would encourage anybody who struggles to pay their rent to sign up because they, the Department of Housing uses 80% of median income to qualify, which is somewhere around $100,000 for one person in San Mateo County. So if you earn under, for example, a single person who earns under $100,000, and if they get selected because it's a lottery system, some portion of your rent could be covered. It doesn't mean that you're going to get the highest. The lower your rent, the higher the subsidy, but the higher your rent, you still get something. And so even if right now, you don't need the help, signing up for it for the future isn't a bad thing, because when you get called in, if you're eligible then, then it's a subsidy that helps you, and it's a five-year program that can be extended if you have a disability or older and can't work.
Great.
So, everybody who needs to, who pays rent should sign up.
A lot of people at the school district can qualify for that.
Oh, absolutely. And we've been hearing from the Department of Housing that they're calling people in. So they're, you know, they're moving through the waitlist, is the point.
Thank you so much, Anita.
Hi, Anita.
Hi.
So, thank you for being here, first of all. I spent a great deal of time on the board, and I continue to be the liaison, so I'm always gratified that I get to keep good company. I recall, before I joined the board, I would sit in the audience and hear the reports I recall before I joined the board, I would sit in the audience and hear the reports and think to myself, I would love to volunteer with PRC. And then life would whisk me away to do whatever. And when I finally joined the board, I had that opportunity to volunteer. And so, I took that opportunity robustly. And since I've been on council, I've waned in that duty. And I was commiserating with John Keener, who told me, you know, it was very important to me that I was always volunteering when I was sitting on council. And I said, yeah, I wish I feel like I don't have the time. And to which he responded, well, I was also retired at the time that I was on council. And so, it's okay. I felt a little less. But the question out of all of this meandering story is, for those out there who might have interest in volunteering with PRC, could you go over again, please, the volunteer opportunities available?
Sure. One of the things we will be doing over this next year is kind of restarting our volunteer program. Once we have the warehouse space, one of the volunteer opportunities will be to help pack groceries that will then get delivered to, to community members. We also have a client choice distribution once a month at the American Legion Hall. So, if, it's the fourth Wednesday of the month in the afternoon. So, if folks are available, we do, we can, you know, slide them into those kinds of opportunities. We are always looking for drivers to help increase our capacity to do deliveries to folks. And actually, we are, I should have mentioned this earlier, I apologize, but we're looking for a part-time driver right now, temporary through the summer. Part of the responsibilities will be picking up grocery rescue items and then helping to deliver, but also setting up the warehouse space. So, if you know anybody or anybody who's listening, watching, who's interested, maybe a, a student who's back from college, it's really a temporary position, three months over the summer. We would really, we really need the help and, you know, could give you some great experience helping other people. That's not a volunteer position, but it is a position we need filled. So, I would say the best way to, to let us know that you're interested in volunteering is to contact us. We can put you on a list of people that we'll reach out to as volunteer opportunities arise. We are always also looking for folks who can help with our shower program. And that doesn't mean anything other than to, you know, remind people when their 20 minutes is up so that they can, you know, leave and then do a very simple cleaning of, of the space so that the next person can come and use the, use, that frees up the staff. So, we're always looking for somebody like that too.
Thank you. You know, I was kind of going back over how fortunate I am in my life as I was listening to you speak. And it, it was this odd combination of fortunate whereby my mother was a waitress and largely a single parent. And so, she was making ends meet. And yet, I had the opportunities to go to these really quite good public schools in Pacifica and ultimately found my way to a four-year private university where I could get the education that I desired. As I was going through my own experience as of, you know, coming from a household that wasn't, would, would easily qualify for your programming and simultaneously having the fortunate stars by which to guide my path to amazing opportunities, I reflected that it seems like, and I, I have been chomping at the bit to have a larger community discussion and at some point we will, but it seems like as I generally hear the community speaking about these issues, oftentimes, especially from those whom have risen from their beginnings and are established, it seems like complexity and nuance are sometimes left out of some of the comments I hear. And I was wondering if you might take a moment to, you know, as a, my experience watching what you do, and I've been watching what you do now for eight years at least, longer than that, because I used to caregiver for a lady who would get food, so now in a decade or more. There are so many different kinds of people with so many different backgrounds and you're not an organization where it's one size fits all and you're not an organization, I mean, clearly you have ongoing programs, but it's, it's less about plug and play and more about, oh, who are you, where are you at, what do we need to do to help you get to the place where you're going? If you could spend a few moments talking about the complexity and nuance that go into what PRC does, I feel like this would be a really good opportunity for the public to have a, a greater sense of some of the work y'all are doing.
Yeah, I, thank you for bringing that up because I do feel like we give things out pretty regularly, right? Backpacks, school supplies, gift cards, food, those are things. But I do think that probably the most important thing that we do is provide a space to problem solve. So, most of the time when we see somebody, you already have the answer. You already know what you need to do or what, what's the, what's the best thing for you to do. But sometimes you just need that, that safe place to explore options. And that's really what we do. So, we do the best that we can to meet folks where they are. You know, I think that in social services, there's a lot of, of comments about don't work harder than the client. And what we try to say is, you know, find that middle ground, you know, because sometimes people need that extra support and that's what we try to provide. So, it is very much unique to the individual. Yes, we, like I said, we provide these items, these things. Those are easy to give, but it's really those longer terms, term plans that make a significant difference in people's lives. And that's what we try to do. So, yeah, in terms of, we see a gamut of, of folks, right? Somebody who is unhoused up to somebody who has been working full-time all their lives and their house caught on fire and they just needed support. They make decent income, but they lost everything and they had to start over. And it's really hard for them to come in. And actually, it's really hard for people who are unhoused to come in too. So, it doesn't really matter what the backgrounds of the folks who need the services. It's really difficult almost always to ask for help. But the reality is, is that each one of us has gotten help at some point or another. And, but it's still difficult to ask. And so, we try to make things as easy as possible, which is why we have an online way to reach out to us. We have online applications. We, we deliver groceries to people's homes so that they don't have to come into the office if it's, if, if it's too difficult to show, show up. So, so yeah, I think that overall, you know, it's meeting people where they are and, and really trying to find the thing that, that helps them move to that next level. And trust us in, on one hand, but then also trust the system and trust that people are out there just trying to help.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work you do. I have one card from the audience, somebody wishing to speak on PRC. So, stick around, there may or may not be more opportunity for you to speak. I do have that one card from Suzanne Moore. Suzanne, you're welcome to come up. If anyone else wishes to say something about PRC, you're welcome to fill a card in the back. And of course, those watching at home are welcome to speak as well. And please state your full name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Suzanne Moore of Pacific Manor and Pacifica Housing for All. As a Pacific resident and volunteer, I am extremely grateful for the work of the Pacifica Resource Center in its efforts to help my neighbors with taxes, food, counseling, in its work with our unhoused neighbors and in its work to educate and advocate in our community. COVID brought neighbors together and challenged us financially, physically, and emotionally. Yet, the PRC met the challenges by providing counting funds during the eviction moratorium, counseling an increased number of our neighbors financially impacted by the economic downturn, and providing food to an increased number of us in need. The PRC has been doing its work for nearly 50 years and our city has benefited. That's why I think it's time for our city to, to designate an annual monetary support, something the PRC can depend on as a part of their budget, something that represents our recognition of their service that they provide and the benefit that Pacifica receives. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Emily, do we have anyone on the phone lines?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. In that case, I'll close public comment. Anita, thank you again so much for all the work you do. Okay. That brings us to the consent calendar. Are there any council members wishing to pull an item from consent? Councilmember Bowles.
Yes, I'm sorry. I need to find my list. I'd like to pull item eight. I know I don't need to give a reason, but this is the first time we're proposing to do the records cleanup. And I think just for transparency and explaining to the public, it'd be helpful to have a presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So, we're pulling item number eight. Any other council members wish to pull an item? Okay. In that case, we will open up public comment on items on the consent minus item number eight because that has been pulled for discussion after the rest of the consent calendar. Anyone wishing to comment on the consent calendar minus item number eight? I have no cards. Emily, anyone on the phone line? Closing public comment and bringing it back to council. Are there any questions or comments on consent items? If not, I will, oh, councilmember.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have one minor correction to the minutes. On page 156, towards the bottom of the page where we're talking about the Surplus Land Act, it's recorded as I, I said, we could develop something about 40 feet by 130 feet, but it's recorded as 30. So, I just wanted to correct that.
So, you're, you're requesting the maker of the motion amend the minutes with your?
Yes.
Very good. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I move that we accept and approve the consent agenda with the slight amendment to the minutes as outlined by Councilmember Bowles. And this would be minus item number eight.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
And with the motion for consent calendar minus item eight and with the amendment to item number two, moved by Beckmeyer, seconded by Beer, that passes unanimously.
And that brings us to item number eight. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick, Mayor Potem Vaterlos, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I can provide a, a brief summary and then if city clerk Coffey would like to add anything that I don't mention, please, she can chime in at that point in time. So, item eight is a follow-up action item to a grand jury report, civil grand jury report that was provided last fall and the council approved the city's response letter to the civil grand jury report. And that report was called, "A Delicate Balance Between Knowledge and Power: Government Transparency and the Public's Right to Know." And the recommendation that the civil grand jury made in the, one of the recommendations was that cities should consider a practice like the city of San Mateo does to do an annual records cleanup day in compliance with their records retention policy, sort of a unique event to hold annually that the city of San Mateo has done. And so, our commitment in our response to the grand jury report was to bring to the city council before the end of June this year, consideration of whether we should do a records cleanup day event. And our recommendation related to this, because in sometime in late fall or early winter, we'll be transitioning back to the newly opened civic center, is that we make it sort of a staff, a staff appreciation and, and, and records cleanup, you know, getting offices ready to move back. We already have adopted a significant records retention policy in 2020, which we follow. And when we transitioned to the community center, we, of course, in any records that we had sorted through and, and cleaned, we followed that policy. So, the cleanup day would occur in accordance with that, that policy. And the item tonight is really just about, does this sound like a good idea? Do we want to do this in the fall sometime? And details of the event would be planned at an administrative level.
Thank you. I certainly recall the civil grand jury report and the vote we took prior. And it's good to see that here it is, we're doing it. If you could elaborate just for a moment, what does that mean, annual records cleanup day? Just give me a, paint a picture for me. What does that look like? Thank you, Sarah.
So, the city of San Mateo does a program that does annual records cleanup day that makes the adherence to their records retention policy and schedule, kind of a fun festive event. They do, they do food trucks and they, the city clerk's office works with the department staff from each department that they identify for their departments, a, a goal for their records cleanup to adhere to the records retention schedule. And they submit a form that documents their goal for that cleanup event. And they will need to submit their form in order to have food from the food trucks. But it allows the flexibility for each department to, to identify their records goals within the structure of the records retention policy and schedule and do what fits best for each department and, and division. And also, it, you know, it provides this fun environment for staff to focus on kind of the need for records management that may often go overlooked in day-to-day activities and especially with, you know, intense workloads that staff is handling. So, it just gives, you know, a little bit more attention to document and records management. Some of those actions could be records destruction in accordance with the records retention schedules. And of course, those schedules meet any kind of statutory requirements as well and also meet the needs of the city. And it could be focusing on, you know, going through emails and getting rid of emails that are beyond retention periods. It could be focused on digitizing records or, you know, calling, calling back records from off-site storage to see if those should be scanned or are eligible for destruction. The city of Pacifica in 2020 worked extensively with a consultant and with staff from each department to develop a city of Pacifica-specific records management policy and retention schedule.
What year was that?
That was in 2020. The policy and the schedule were adopted by city council in November 2020. And so, what is proposed in the staff report here is to reach out to the consultant that assisted the city in developing our own records retention policy and schedule to, to provide some additional guidance and training to city staff. So, you know, with some staff turnover, there may be new staff and this would help staff become and remind staff about being acquainted with our policy and schedules. And then there is a draft form in the agenda packet attached to this staff report that's modeled after the city of San Mateo's form that they used for their departments and staff to identify records management goals in conjunction with their records cleanup day.
I seem to recall that I might have a lingering planning commission or two email left in my inbox. I might want to join you for the festivities. It sounds like an amazing opportunity to refocus on a duty that might sometimes get left by the wayside and bring a heightened awareness to best practices in general. So, thank you very much for elucidating. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Just a question, Sarah, on the focus on that day, on the records retention or records management day.
Right, the records cleanup day is what was suggested.
And so, would it, is it appropriate to say that staff would work on cleaning up records that day? Or also plan for other?
So, it would be planning for that day, the records cleanup day would be kind of the, the festivities around that. So, kind of, you know, the celebration that would, that would be kind of celebrating the, the activities that staff did over a period of time to culminate in that records cleanup day. And what we're envisioning is that, you know, the, we can, of course, each department can coordinate a records destruction or onsite shredding if they need to, once the, once the approval has been given through the review according to the policy. So, we're not just willy-nilly destroying documents and shredding documents. There is an approval process that is notated in the, in the policy. So, it goes through the So, it goes through the department's records coordinator review, it goes to the city clerk for review, and then to the city attorney's office for review before any records are... Any records are, like, you know, active or inactive records are destroyed. There's some records called transitory documents that are, you know, drafts that are not, you know, records in a sense that they need to be retained for any, like, significant period, like, for the purpose of drafts. Once a final document is approved, then the draft can just be destroyed without having to go through this approval process.
Thank you. And I do remember in 2020 going over this because I remember asking questions, and the city attorney was like, "Why are you asking this question?" But it was really educational for me, and it is a robust policy. And so, I appreciate you going over that as a reminder. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowles.
I think you kind of answered my question, but I'm just trying to imagine this process and how much work it is, you know, for you and the city attorney. So, every record that's not, you know, something that's transitory, as you say, gets looked at individually by both of you?
So, the records retention schedule that was developed categorizes records into different categories. So, part of the goal in the records cleanup day may just be organizing records in a meaningful way by their record category that's... Or identifying that category that is then connected with a records retention period for that category of records. So, it could be more organization, you know, goal-related for departments, rather than actually, like, destroying any records that are beyond their retention period. So, the records retention schedules are developed in a way to identify different record categories. And if those... If records are filed in a very organized way and in, you know, in a time range that are filed together, then you don't necessarily need to look at each and every record to approve that destruction. You can say, "This box is a box of this type of records for this period of time, so is now eligible for destruction." And the records coordinator for that department would, you know, would make sure that those documents are filed properly and are within a category that is subject to being beyond their retention period.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? If not, I have one card from the public, from Cliff Lawrence. Anyone else, of course, is welcome to speak if you'd like.
Cliff Lawrence, District One. This is a topic that has been a big part of my life. I used to conduct some INRs on it. And I'm glad that you have it, but there are, how to say, I want to call them problems. If you don't do the training and you don't do the independent audits, a court can really rip us apart on this, and I don't want to be paying out of the treasury for documents that a court feels that we didn't get rid of when we should have, or we got rid of something before we should have. This echoes that delicate balance you were talking about. And when I hear that, I am concerned that we don't thwart the public's ability to discovery when there is appeals, court cases. This could be critical. As for the festival, I am hoping that this is not a party-type atmosphere where we start burning documents in a pile. And the other thing I'm concerned about is, in government, you can sometimes create an atmosphere of competition between departments. I don't hope that departments try to see if they can destroy more documents than the next guy. So, document management is important. It needs to be followed closely. Training and independent audits are what has to be included. But I wanted to thank the city and the city clerk especially for what you have done with the request system. It's so different than what it was. It's been very helpful, and we really appreciate the timely responses on it. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Cliff. I don't have any other cards from the public, although one is coming this way. While I wait for that one to arrive, Emily, is there anyone on the phone line who seems to be wishing to speak? Okay. And this appears to be public comment in general. So, we'll close public comment for this item and bring it back to council. I do want to follow up with the commenter and just ask Sarah if training and audits are part and parcel with the cleanup day.
Yes, so, I... As I was explaining the process a little bit, the first thing that I started with was reaching out to the consultant that assisted in developing our records retention policy and schedule that we've adopted now. So, I agree that training is very important, and especially with staff turnover, new staff coming on board, and it's important to remind staff that there is a policy in place, and we need to adhere to the policy and also to the detailed records retention schedules. So, and then also, not only that, but records organization and management is a priority as well. So, it's not really coordinated in a way that we're doing a competition, so to speak, to destroy, you know, as many documents or more documents than another department. The goals are specific to each department and the needs of that department. So, if there's a department that feels that they need to focus more on, you know, getting the old emails under control, saving off documents from emails into, you know, a more organized way for those that need to be retained, or also just organizing records in a way so that they can, you know, relate to the records management schedule better. Those are all equally priority goals in the records cleanup day, so it's not just a shredding event.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bowles.
Yeah, and just to follow up on your other question, and Cliff's on independent audits, is that something that's done regularly?
We don't have independent audits, but there's an audit process kind of built into the retention policy, the destruction policy. So, it's audited in the sense that the department staff are not just unilaterally making the decision to destroy records. It does go through city clerk and also city attorney review before there's any approvals given. And then also, I just want to highlight in response to the comment that the city transparency is very important to the city and the public's right to know. So, call it this grand jury report entitled "A Delicate Balance and the Public's Right to Know." The city does agree with that and wholeheartedly agrees with transparency and the public's right to know, that the city's business is the public's business.
Thank you. Mayor Potem.
I'm just amazed that this schedule is so elaborate, and each person is... Or each subject has its own line, its own numbers, and everybody will know exactly what it is because it says, "If it's this, it's one year. If it's this, it's two years." And they're very detailed, the charts telling what the retention policy is. So, each department would know exactly where their department stands in this destruction. So, thank you.
Yeah, and so, part of the review process, so when those requests come to the city clerk's office, I will reject and send back to the department any lists that do not include, like, a reference to the retention schedule in that document series. So, we need to identify that, to clearly identify the retention period.
Councilmember Beer.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Sarah. Any questions that I did have, you completely answered, and so, I want to thank you for all the clarity that you've provided tonight.
I will echo that. Thank you very much. It's a lot of work, and it's work that largely is probably not known, let alone underappreciated. So, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the records cleanup day event and related activities. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Which is item eight from the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
Agenda item number eight, as moved by Mayor Potem Vaterlos and seconded... Sorry, as moved by Councilmember Beckmeyer, seconded by Mayor Potem Vaterlos, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public comments on items not on the posted agenda. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided, however, that only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. We request that you address your remarks to the council as a body rather than any individual member. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. If you ask a question, we are not going to immediately answer it in real time, nor will we be discussed. It's a monologue, not a dialogue. But sometimes, at the end of public comment, we do address certain comments we've heard. So, stick around for a moment. If you feel like you're asking for clarity, sometimes we're able to offer clarity. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. Please adhere to the three-minute timeline, and as long as things aren't too rowdy, I don't have to read the rest of what is in the posted agenda. So, with that, I have a number of cards, starting with Cliff Lawrence, then Lauren Smith, and then Frank Vella.
I'm here tonight to speak about the turnout last week for the planning commission and the quarry, which is coming to you. So, it is a topic of your jurisdiction. And there's a couple of questions I still have. One is, I understand that, okay, the city didn't pick the vendor, that the owner did. But we're going to approve this, and when we approve it, in a sense, we're going to approve that this particular company is going to do the work. Now, number one, they have no experience in doing a reclamation of a quarry, I believe, and that's been confirmed. Number two, and this concerns me as well, a part of this plan is to destroy one wetland and create another. Now, I'm not a biologist. I don't know what the success rate is in creating a wetland. But one of the other things that crops up in this plan is an acknowledgement that first they're going to destroy the one, there's going to be a lapse of time before they create the other. Now, what happens to that biology? They say they're moving the wetlands 1,000 feet. And again, what's their experience? And what's the result if it doesn't work? We go, "Whoops, we lost some frogs. See what happens next year." So, when this does eventually come to council, I hope that you will seriously consider the no- fill option, and I thank you again.
Thank you, Cliff. Lauren Smith.
Hello, council members. First, I want to thank the entire Coast Pride staff, primarily board, and all of the Pride Committee, as well as all the volunteers, many of whom we didn't even know who showed up a week ago to help throw our first official, but actually second, annual Pride Festival. I also want to thank Brendan, who was my counterpart on the EDC Ad Hoc Committee to help bring this to fruition. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Katie Brookshire, who conceived of and pressured for this event for many years, definitely as long as I've known her. So, we had no idea what we were doing, just going to be honest about that. That being said, we had amazing guides at our disposal with Sue and Mary, and we really didn't know how much, I mean, closing down Palmetto would cost or take. We were really unclear as to how much appetite there might be for this type of event, other than some really loud vociferous people, including myself. And so, when we started on this endeavor, it was just like, "Let's make this real." And then, we went from there to suddenly realizing that in one day, we could raise $16,000. That was in one day, at one event. And what that showed me was that there is a huge demand for LGBTQ support in this community. I mean, Coast Pride. Pride is providing amazing services along those lines, but essentially, people are trying to find ways to support the queer community in Pacifica and to make it a safe place for everyone. I think, you know, on that day, we closed down Palmetto successfully, and we created a family-friendly zone that was an alternative to a really debaucherous pride that we've probably all seen in some local communities around us that will not be named. So, it was really just tables for nonprofits and kids to get resources and feel seen and cared about. And we saw connections between the library and other groups. And so, if our goal was, if even one kid felt better about themselves and felt supported, that was a win. But instead, we had hundreds, for sure. I mean, we had over 1,000 people. IBL was packed to the brim. Again, we could not have expected this. You hope for the best and prepare for the worst, and this exceeded our expectations. I mean, I know in today's world, the politicization of LGBTQ issues is frankly terrifying, and I think it's really important that as Pacificans, we make this a community where everyone feels safe. And that's what we saw a week ago. And of course, it shouldn't just be one day. And we had a ton of momentum. It definitely also made this known to be a safe place for people. That being said, we can't keep this going without some fiscal support, and so, we would ask that we can make this bigger and better year after year by allocating additional funds in pursuing years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren. Frank Vella, followed by Delia McGrath, and then Brendan Berman. That's my last card for the moment, anyway.
Good evening, mayor and city council members and staff. Frank Vella Lindemar. Over the past five years of local coastal planning in Bay, members of the community have held their own planning meetings involving hundreds of residents. Recently, over 100 people attended two meetings involving the subject of the local coastal plan and our interaction with the Coastal Commission. Residents, business owners, and property owners are concerned about the process and efforts going forward regarding protecting Beach Boulevard and other parts of Pacifica that may affect their property values, businesses, and residencies. Our seawall is deteriorating, and it is unknown how much time we have left to avert a catastrophe. We realize that there have been efforts by all of you and our city manager to work with elected officials throughout the county and state. Unfortunately, many residents feel that they do not have important information regarding this process and are requesting that a special study session be held to address their issues and concerns. We are aware that on June 27th, there is a Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Community meeting being held at the community center at 6:00 PM on that day. A one-and-a-half meeting will not give the public sufficient time to discuss the issues at all. Property owners are already being affected in their ability to get insurance and financing. Every resident needs the infrastructure protected along Beach Boulevard. It and the cost of not protecting our infrastructure will be enormous to every resident, no matter where they live. We cannot afford to move our sewage, power, businesses, or residencies. Other properties in various districts of the city also need protection from the constant actions of the ocean. We're asking for a special study session, community meeting, or workshop, call it what you like, regarding our local coastal plan, the Coastal Commission, and the protection of our city. The March 9 Coastal Commission staff report against Pacifica's LCP was harmful to our homeowners, residences, and businesses and the coastal economy. Hopefully, we will see a Pacifica staff analysis of the March 9 Coastal Commission staff report. Ideally, shortly after the June 27 seawall meeting in the community center would be a great time for a public meeting. Our time is short to deal with the Coastal Commission and the local coastal plan. The plan is coming back to the Coastal Commission September through December. Residents want to be fully informed and involved and are asking for this meeting as soon as possible. I've got over 100 petitions that request this, and I'm submitting that to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Delia McGrath?
Good evening, council. And my name is Delia McGrath. I live in Valimar and have lived there for 45 years. Tonight, I'm here as a representative of Pacifica Peace People. We're a local grassroots group, 20 years in existence, and our motto is "Acting Locally for Peace Globally." Very grateful that when the students from Terranova came here a couple of weeks ago to ask the city to support the ICANN, which is the International Committee Against Nuclear War, that I understand that this city is going to sign on as a city to do that, and we're very grateful for that. But I also want to talk about, there is a war going on that the United States is heavily involved in, if not troops on the ground. Over the weekend, there was an international summit for peace in Ukraine, and 300 people from 30 different countries attended this conference in Vienna, Austria. And they made a declaration that I would like to read at least parts of it this evening, just to keep us aware that we really want to get in touch with our governmental officials about our feelings about this war and what the U.S. is contributing to it. So this declaration says, "Peace by peaceful means. Ceasefire and negotiations now. We, the organizers of the International Summit for Peace in Ukraine, call on leaders in all countries to act in support of an immediate ceasefire and negotiations to end the war in Ukraine." I see that my time is rapidly leaving me, so I'm not going to read anything further. But we call on civil society in all countries to join us in a week of global mobilization, which will be Saturday, September 30th, to Sunday, October 8th, for an immediate ceasefire and peace negotiations to end this war. The Pacifica Peace People will definitely participate in that week of mobilization. So we'll give you more information as the time comes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Delia. Brendan Berman, followed by Petra Greshmer and Lori Gueguero.
Hi, council members. I'm Brendan Berman, a member of the Economic Development Committee, as well as the Pride Ad-Hoc Committee. First, I stand here today as a citizen, with a man's pride and gratitude, as I reflect on the recent Pride Parade and celebration that took place in Pacifica. The vibrant colors, the joyous atmosphere, and the sense of unity and acceptance that permeated the event were truly awe-inspiring. And like Lauren, I'd like to take a moment to express my appreciation to the Coast Pride staff and board, as well as all the volunteers, the various city employees, and agencies who all partnered to enable this significant community activity for our city. As I put on my EDC member hat, I will also acknowledge the positive effects it had on our local economy. Bringing visitors into our city is a catalyst for economic growth, and events like these provide a tremendous boost to our small businesses. The influx of visitors stimulates spending in local shops, restaurants, and accommodations, creating a ripple effect that benefits our entire community. While acknowledging the positive impact on our local economy, it's also essential to recognize the tremendous funds currently necessary for organizing and executing such an event. These costs are associated with street closures, ensuring the safety of participants through the presence of a dedicated police force, and associated logistics of large events. I believe these types of events represent a potential strategic investment for Pacifica that could yield significant economic and cultural benefits for our city. If the city is able to attract and host more events that draw a large number of visitors from outside the region, will create a compounding effect where visitors want to return for other events in Pacifica, thus giving event planners more reasons to choose Pacifica for their event. By taking a proactive approach for hosting events, Pacifica can position itself as an attractive and vibrant destination, drawing more visitors in the long run and bolstering the local economy through increased tourism revenue and tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Petra, followed by Lori. Those are the last two cards I have for the moment. Petra Greshmer, if you wish to come up, please state your full name for the record. And of course, anybody watching at home can dial in at 669-900-6833. Webinar ID 811-5615-8241-POUND. Press *9 to raise your hand. Welcome.
Hi. Hello, mayor and councilpeople. My name is Petra Greshmer, and I am here before you regarding the issue with Maury Point and the traffic in Fairway Park West. I'm going to give you this. This is a letter I just hand-delivered to the superintendent of the parks, because they have not responded to any emails. This is something we talked to you about way back in December when COVID hit. So the problem we're facing here is the fact with COVID and, you know, social media and whatnot, people are able to pin things wherever they want on Google Maps and Apple Maps and AllTrails. And so that's really become the problem. So I have included literature from the sites of the Golden Gate Recreation Area, the Conservancy, even the signage you have here in Pacifica. But I just, if you can see, I don't know if it's possible to see, what is happening in our neighborhood? Probably not. But this is a neighborhood that has been inundated with hundreds of people. Hundreds of people, trash, defecation, urination of humans, not animals. I mean, animals, yes, but humans as well. Drug paraphernalia. This is going on in the evening, all night long. On a weekend, you can't even sleep. So, you know, sleeping in. I walk my dog at 6:00 o'clock. By 7:00, I heard people all the way on the main trail, all the way at the dead end of Fairway. So it's really not even fair to the people up at the top where the trailhead is to have this many people. Any other place, if it's Superbloom or wherever, they have shut down areas when it's too full, right? We have not had any support from the city of Pacifica, none, for three years now. Three years. My parents were held hostage due to COVID, but they were unable to even be on their front lawns gardening at that point. It's really disheartening to know that the city did nothing about this. You guys can't see it. So I don't know what the answer is. What the suggestions I put in here are to have multiple points of access, end of Beach Boulevard, there at the Rockaway area, and also in Valimar. And then you would actually have people hopefully spending money in Pacifica. Right now, you're having them come through Pacifica, leave their trash, cost us money, disrupt our neighborhood. Oh, that's the other thing I've added here, is the ordinance, the noise ordinance from the city of Pacifica. So, something you probably already know, but it's all included in here. I thank you for your time, and I really hope this finally gets people moving to help us in our little neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lori Gueguero.
Hi again, council members. Thank you so much for hearing us about this terrible thing that's been going on. Last time, when I spoke to you guys, I failed to mention a very big problem that is affecting us, and that was the mapping error. I'm not sure if you guys found out about it, but everybody that's being directed to Maury Point, Googling, Appeling, Tesla Mapping, all of them, is directing them straight to my house. My house at the dead end is the sensitive habitat area for the endangered species, I'm sure you guys are well aware of. So every single person that is coming is being directed to the endangered species area. So I've made lots of notes, and, not notes, signs. They're posted on my fence. They're, you know, stand-up, telling people it's a dead end, because apparently, they don't know the symbol of a dead end, and they're speeding 50-plus down Fairway. Now I'm being, things have progressed, and now I'm being berated. Now I'm being, you know, mocked and made fudam for my signage. Most of the people actually appreciate it, and they're, you know, from out of town, and they're thanking me for directing them to multiple access points. You know, it's too busy here, go there and there. But now I'm being berated online, social media. People have put screws in my tires, and they're putting my address now and telling more people to come and harass me. I'm just tired of calling the police. I'm tired of policing. I'm tired of every time my dog barks to go and look to see what is going on, who's doing what to me now. One of the people that actually came to Maury Point to do some of the volunteers coming to do work there, when they left, they took off one of the signs saying, "Wrong map location", kicked over the sawhorse stand, and good thing my neighbor got a picture of the license plate and everything, which is also going to be reported to GG NRA. A lot of the tourists that are coming from out of town are appreciative of the directions, and they don't want to trompele through the endangered species habitat, once they're made aware, but they don't even know that they're there. We've been asking for signs, please, close it. It just needs to be closed. It was supposed to be for residential access. That way, the residents are held accountable for their actions. They're going to act appropriately because they live in the neighborhood. It's not a place for public behavior, or for public traffic. So I did have a couple of questions about the committee that you guys had. I'm not sure where to get information or where things stand, so I did want to kind of throw that out there. Maybe you guys could shoot me in the right direction. But it's led to the point of us not being safe. We don't feel safe in our home. 4:00 AM, some guy's coming to fish, sounds is alarm, and, you know, I have to run out there and tell him about it. And now I'm awake for another hour and a half. I think that might be my three minutes, but any help would be great. Just thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lori. I don't have any other cards for the moment. If anyone wishes to speak, they're welcome to fill out one in the back. Yes, please come up.
I'm one of her neighbors. Just a quick thing, as far as our neighborhood is concerned.
I don't mean to interrupt you, sir, and we'll restart your time if you'd be willing to state your full name for the record. We would appreciate it.
Dennis Hogan.
Thank you very much.
So what would it take to institute a permit parking system in our neighborhood like they have in the city? That would stop all these people blocking driveways and everything else, because it would be an automatic tow thing. And that would be one possible solution to this stuff. And then the other thing is Coastal Commission and the beach protection thing and all that. I understood that the beaches were owned by Golden Gate National Recreation Area and the state. I don't believe they're owned by Pacifica anymore. Is that correct?
We're not at liberty to answer questions in real time, but I can have staff follow-up afterward.
Well, anyhow, what I was going to say was, is as far as that's concerned, Pacifica would tell the state or the government that they took it over and they're responsible to maintain it, if that's what they did. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Marge Davis?
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you for allowing me to comment. I almost decided not to, because what I'm hearing going on in this neighborhood, I have such sympathy for that, and especially the harassment. I'm frankly, I'm appalled, and my comment isn't really time-sensitive. It's not as time-sensitive. It's about the quarry reclamation project, and I think we all know that that's going to be, you know, a lengthy process. So I'm going to abbreviate it a little, because there is one thing I really wanted to share about it. One of the things is what Cliff mentioned about that the contractor has admitted, the applicant has admitted, they have no experience with reclamation. And I find that rather scary and horrifying. I have been in and out of cement mills, quarries, batch plants, and mines throughout my career. Earthwork is incredibly dangerous work. I think this is one of the most challenging and technical projects that is coming up, apart from the seawall. And it seems to me that there are alternatives that could have been considered further that haven't been. I think at this point, the EIR based on other expo, you know, based on the amount of public comments and expert and regulatory comments is perhaps incomplete. I think we need a complete EIR. Frankly, to me, the process around this reclamation right now is not only incomplete, but it's kind of mired at this point. And as Peter Loeb mentioned, it also seems like it's a little bit out of order. I think he used the term "pass backwards." But I thought perhaps it would make more sense if we completed the quarry-specific plan that City Manager Woodhouse has mentioned is in the queue and is being done, I believe, for the owner, and he's picking up the expense. And then, once that is done, the city could go out for proposals on the reclamation that is tailored to that plan. They could get proposals from geotechnical experts who have experience with this type of project. They could get proposals that have as little impact as possible on the environment and quality of life in the community. I think this, the current proposal is going to have a huge impact on this community. It's going to be a huge burden. It's going to impact quality of life, pollution, dust, noise, the safety risks involved, and again, with an inexperienced contractor. And I think, you know, we've talked about the reputation, and I don't think we need to go into that, but that's another thing. Do we really want to take the risk and partner with somebody who really may not have the qualifications to do it? And I just want to say, we have one proposal via one application, and I don't think it's in the greater public is interested in seeing it to fruition, and we don't have to accept it. And perhaps, if we study some alternatives, those will actually bring more community benefit than the current project. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge. Emily, do we have anyone on the phone line?
There are no raised hands.
I'm not seeing any other cards or anyone jumping up from the audience. One last check for the phones. Emily, we're good. Closing public comment now and bringing it back. There was a very specific question about Pacifica owning beaches. City Manager, if you could quickly answer that question, please.
I'm not sure that beach ownership is actually a simple question, so it's rather complicated. Depends on where the mean high-tide line is and whether the state owns it, or private property ownership, or the city. City manages beach land, but I'm going to have to, I can't provide a simple answer to that. I could turn to Planning Director Murdock, in case he knows more information, but I didn't quite catch the point that was made about beach ownership in the context of talking about Fairway, so maybe there's a different question there that I could answer.
There was another point, I think, ultimately being made, but I did want to clarify that as the as the simple part. And I forgot for a moment that in government, there are no simple answers to anything ever, so you'll have to forgive me for that. But Director Murdock.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Planning Director Christian Murdock. City Manager Woodhouse mentioned beach ownership is relatively complicated and there are different ownerships in the simplest sense between City of Pacifica, State of California, potentially the federal government depending on the location and what you define as a beach, and so, as well as potentially privately-owned beach in narrow areas of Pacifica as well. So, really, it's geographically specific as well as legally specific and definitionally specific, so very complicated question to answer.
Okay, thank you for that. For those of you who weren't present while we were going through the study session on commissions and committees, what occurred to me kind of toward the end of that study session as the Maury Point issue did come up, was that it might be not a bad idea to have a joint study session between OSPAC, Emergency Preparedness, and PARC Beaches and REC to figure out what next steps look like. I'll be discussing that idea with City Manager going forward. In the meantime, the meeting that was referenced last time was the Open Space Park Land Advisory Committee meeting. The next one will be on the 21st of this month. It's Wednesday, the 21st, and that'll be at 6:00 PM at the Community Center on Crespey. And generally, there is a representative from GG NRA present, so all are welcome. Yes, it's on June 21st. It's a Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the Community Center on Crespey. There were a couple of questions about, perhaps Councilmember Beer, is there a Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project meeting coming up on the 27th, I think the, okay? And that'll be at 6:00 PM in the Community Center, is that right? And that'll be pushed out through Connect with Pacifica, I'm sure.
And I think everyone in the city has got, should have gotten notification in the mail.
I sure did.
Very good. And so, we're at the beginning of a process. I think staff is looking at 125 data points that were provided by Coastal Commission staff, and so, we're not exactly sure what next steps look like yet. Certainly, if there are substantial, substantial recommendations, it will be coming before council for discussion and if it looks like that's the case, then we'll reach out. Those were the two big-picture clarifications, unless anyone else wanted to make one. I appreciate you folks from Maury Point especially coming out and keeping us abreast of what's going on and keep doing that. For us, I don't think a solution is obvious and laying in our laps, but as long as your voice continues, we're going to keep figuring out what we need to figure out until we get there. So, thank you for being here. Staff communication.
Can I just real briefly talk about the map?
Please.
Because we looked at the map and it leads right, right to her house, so is there any way in a future meeting we can talk about that? I'm just not sure how to address it in any way, but I just wanted to put it out there that we did look it up, literally goes right to her house. So, just wanted to.
Yeah, certainly, the mapping resources and the technology that relates to those is a topic that the city has spoken with GG NRA about, as well as advertising the southernmost and the northernmost access points, which actually I did the week before last in my Connect with Pacifica intro to say people should consider going down to Rockaway or Beach Boulevard to access along the levee. But, just on that topic, we're not here to delve in and talk about details about this, but we're talking with GG NRA, we had a meeting with them last week to talk about all of the potential solutions that are on the table, so.
Thank you. Staff communications. Oh, council communications, I'm sorry. Perhaps a resource, no. Council communications, starting with Councilmember Beer.
Did you say me?
Yours was the only light to head on. It might have lingered from your last comment.
No, it's fine. I just want to take a moment to, I know we're probably going to adjourn our meeting in honor of our dear friend Jane Northrup, but I, I just wanted to take a moment, we could just have a moment of silence for Jane right now, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. I know I'm going to miss her dearly. Okay, so now I'll go on with what I've done in the past week. Pride. I feel like that's all I've been working on for at least a long time. So, I'm on the board of Coast Pride, so that means we're working on Pride events here in Pacifica and in Half Moon Bay and in San Mateo, and so, that's been Pride after Pride after Pride. And our event here in the city, as was already, you've heard from our folks from Economic Development, was awesome. And it was a beautiful planning process. I see Robin Rooney's here in the audience, I want to thank you for your help with the parade information that you provided, it was very helpful for us. Hats off to Fog Fest folks, okay? Because I had no idea what it took to close down a street, so maybe I should like participate in Fog Fest now, right? Yeah. I said it publicly, so there you go. But I do want to take a moment just to thank all the people that helped us, especially Alyssa, who was our rock through this whole thing, she was the liaison for the city, we could not have done it without her, so thank you, thank you to the City Manager for having Alyssa share her time with us and the Planning Committee, it was really great to have her there, the folks from the Economic Development Committee, Sue Beckmeyer, thank you.
Mary Beer, thank you.
Wow, we just worked so hard. And then, of course, Katie at Table Wine, you know, go to Table Wine, just go there, she's awesome. What I did hear as far as feedback from the community, we do a lot of outreach events in my job and people kept sending me emails and responding to me that it was the best tabling event that they have had in a really long time, that people were continuously engaged the entire time, asking questions, getting connected to resources. And so, that says a lot, because sometimes it's hard to have an outreach table when nobody shows up, right? And so, to have that continuous conversation happening throughout the event was really wonderful. I want to thank Pacifica School District for dealing with me as I was trying to get the permits in place and all the food truck vendors, I don't know if you all know what it takes to have a food truck, but there's a lot of permits and a lot of bureaucracy. So, there was city, school district and county issues that our food truck vendors had to deal with, so hats off to them, it was really hard for them because they just want to sell food out of their truck, right? They don't want to have to like figure out what they have to put on their insurance and all of these things. So, I was so happy that they were able to pull it all together and to be there. Yeah, I cannot say enough about that whole experience. And please, go and visit coastpride.org, check them out, they're a wonderful agency, they're bringing all of these resources to our city, they serve from Pacifica to Pescadero and they need our support. They're a very young agency with a very small operating budget. I'm on the board, I didn't realize how new they were, super tiny operating budget, so we're going to beef that up and try to, you know, get some more funding to come in, but it really is about community support. And it's just an awesome agency, they're right there on Main Street in Half Moon Bay. Okay, enough about Pride. Having said that, it really wore me out, and so I've had to like step back for a minute and take care of my own mental health and my own physical health and kind of like set some boundaries and be like, I can't do this today, I can't do that today, and so, I think we all need to do that every once in a while, you know, to take care of ourselves, especially when we're super, super tired and have to show up for things, so I'm just going to say that. I went to a training on microaggressions and communication styles, highly recommend it. I would hope that our city could maybe look into maybe offering these kind of opportunities to our staff and our commissions and our electeds. It's really important information and for me to understand the microaggressions that come out of my mouth when I'm not, you know, conscious of it. So, there's a lot of learning that can happen there and how we communicate with each other is so important. And I think that's one thing that I have learned being on council, right? That we are communicating with everyone, so we're communicating with people here, we're communicating with people way over here and way over here. And somehow, we have to bring people together to the table. And so, that's one of the most important things I think that I've learned how to do is to communicate fully with our, with our community, our whole community. Not an easy thing to do, but it's really satisfying when we can meet each other heart-to-heart, head-to-head and come together. I attended a county discussion on fentanyl. It was a really important conversation that our County Board of Supervisors was having, we were going to be seeking some funding for our prevention work, so it was really good for me to be there and to hear the engagement that our County Board of Supervisors is having. Our new supervisors are great, they're doing a great job and so, we should be super proud of them. Excuse me. I attended the HART board meeting and I wanted to talk about that really quick. So, HART is the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County. And HART is a really awesome agency that, one part of HART is they help first-time buyers purchase their homes. The newest program for HART, which I'm so honored to be a part of, is the Housing Preservation Program. And the main point of the Housing Preservation Program is to purchase and preserve existing naturally occurring affordable multifamily housing. And by doing that, there's all these benefits that come in, they can obtain immediate property tax exemptions, they can apply for flexible occupancy standards, issue bonds. It was our first meeting, so there was a lot of information, but what this group is able to do is to gather funding, so we're doing a lot of fundraising for it, purchase buildings that are like five or more units, upgrade it, you know, put all the retrograde stuff in there, make sure that the folks who are living there are allowed to stay living there, have deed restrictions, low-income housing, it's really important work. And it's just like the very teeny-tiny, it was our first meeting. And so, thank you, Councilmember Bowles, for, I know you really wanted to serve on the HART board, so I just want to thank you for like allowing me to do it and to have this opportunity to learn so much. It's hard for me to ask people for money, but there were some people on the list that I actually knew. And so, I'm like, okay, so I'm going to go out and ask people for money for this, right? For this very important program because we need housing and we need naturally low, like affordable housing, so I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Again, I would have said I didn't attend very many meetings and and I would be wrong. We went to the Council of Cities in Atherton. The Council of Cities are always good for council members because you get to know the other council members in other cities, which allows us to have their input, their support. We want to be on committees, you learn and meet the other people and it's really important. Plus, we got to see their new town hall and got to be envious again. The Veterans Memorial, that was held on Veterans Day, that was a really great ceremony, finally dedicating the Veterans Memorial because it does now have landscaping. And if you haven't seen it, go over to the Veterans Building in Rockaway Beach and you can see the monument to all of the veterans from Pacifica who passed away in war. Another sad thing was I went to the party for the end of the bowling alley and that was definitely a sad event. I heard some things that are positively not true and I'll say it here because people said the city required them to close. That is absolutely not the truth. The city did not require them to close. I had an amazing time at the Pride Parade and after, it was a great community event. I went to Josh Becker's campaign kickoff after that. Also, the City and County Association of Government Legislative, we go over the state budget, which is sad because we had this huge amount of overage and now we're at a deficit with the state, so a lot of the things that we thought we were going to get a lot of money for were not. We also go over the various bills, there are a lot of bills that we supported that became two-year bills, so they just go off kind of in suspense. Then, the City and County Association of Governments, regular meeting, we have presentations and we're seeing things on stormwater now and education, so nice that we're progressing past our usual topic. I also am still on the, it was called the COVID Recovery Council and we're figuring out a new name, Economic Recovery Council, Planning Recovery, we're not sure yet, but I am the only elected official on there and I thought we were going to add additional elected officials. We're going to add a lot more private sector people because it's about funding and a lot of the items that the county did during COVID that are still continuing and it's a really important process. I went to a well-attended Sea Level Rise meeting to, I listened. We presented a resolution at the county fair yesterday, was that yesterday? Oh my goodness. Yesterday, for Coast Day at the fair, and we got to hear Dolores Huerta, who was the first woman who worked in the farmworkers to get them unionized, and basic necessities like they had no toilets, no water and no breaks for the farmworkers. And it was really moving to hear her talk about that whole process and what it took to get the farmworkers so that they could unionize. And along with Cesar Chavez, and one of her things she pointed out was in the whole country, there are only four Cesar Chavez streets named after Cesar Chavez, and that was kind of surprising. So, all in all, things were eventful. I have one more thing to say. San Francisco Parks and GG NRA did contact me about the Maury Point Memorial that people have put together, they have memorial rocks, memorial plaques, et cetera. They are going to clean it all out again this week, so if anyone has anything that means something to them, they are not going to keep anything, they are going to remove everything from there and make it back to a natural environment, so. And they did ask me to please spread the word, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowles.
Thank you. I too attended the Council of Cities in Atherton and this is one of the joys for me, being an architect and serving in this role, is getting to see all these amazing new buildings as they open up and
You were so happy.
I was so happy.
You were so happy.
And I'm so nerdy. I was questioning about their roof details on their
Pressed earth.
On the, yeah, pressed earth building. But it was also inspirational seeing their library and thinking about our library, it was, I mean, it was a small space, but it was just really well-planned and great light from the outside connection to the outdoors and outdoor spaces where people could go and read and congregate and a little outdoor space off the Maker Space and, yeah, it has me drooling too, as I know it does you all. And, yeah, it has me drooling too, as I know it does does you all. I just realized it's been six months, almost three days short of of since I've been on the council and been sworn in. And in the last two weeks, I had my last orientation meeting with Public Works, which was really great and I really appreciate Lisa and Roland and all the staff I got to meet and and go to all the back areas. Like, I didn't realize we fixed all the city vehicles and our fire engines and, you know, things like that. So just learning more about what our departments do. And then I got a tour of the Lindemar Pump Station, both the stormwater and the sewer. And just to correct some disinformation, if you see steam, that's not the sewer, that's the stormwater. It's a big steam pump. I got to go down all and all the bowels of of the pump station, which was fun. And they're really working hard. The equipment is being serviced, repaired, rebuilt, and I think we're gonna be in really good shape for this year's El Nino in that area and I really trust our staff there. I had a great meeting with Habitat for Humanity. I'm so excited. I met with their, I know, my nerdy is the CEO, the Director of Development and the Director of Construction. And we started with our introductions. They all had ties to Pacifica and they all already love Pacifica and they would love to come work in Pacifica. So we started talking about a few sites and they're gonna go back and think about things. But, you know, as I've talked to other affordable housing developers right now, it's so difficult because of finances and, you know, with loan rates and so forth too and construction costs are so high. And the neat thing about Habitat is, one, that they'll work on smaller projects, others will, you know, won't need 70 units or so, but they'll work on smaller things. And then with the sweat equity, it makes things more affordable and, you know, again, builds community as part of the process. So anyway, I'm real excited and hope to have Born to Share on that soon. We had a really big meeting at the San Francisco Airport Roundtable. They said this was actually a lifetime opportunity. The FCC hasn't reviewed their, some of their policies, I think, since the 60s. And there's new research now about the health effects of airplane noise, you know, being constantly woken up and, you know, cardiac issues, issues in children, long-term health effects. And so they're actually have a public review process. There's a document they've issued, a public comment period until the end of July. And so at this meeting, the Roundtable was was working through the letter that we were gonna send together. But they're also really encouraging cities to also send letters. So once I get the final letter from them, I'm hoping to set up a meeting here in our community where where we can work on that. It's been a nightmare the last few months, especially those of us living on the north side of town with the runway closures. So those fortunately, you know, opened back up. But, yeah, 1:00 in the morning flights every three minutes, you know, it's just, it's been crazy. And, oh, and then I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy, I forget what it stands for, CAC, it's the community group that advises the board. And so we had a preview of the budget and the state's actually forcing community choice aggregates to purchase additional power to build resilience, more than they would normally need just to have as a backup. And there's so much demand for that across the whole state, so it's super expensive. So we're gonna be paying a lot more for that. But they're doing so well, that the company, the organization is so well managed that they're, you know, there's gonna be a surplus and they're gonna have meetings to decide what to do with the extra money. So, you know, helping electrify more. I know, you know, they're looking at projects here in Pacifica now. So it's, anyway, it's really exciting to be a part of that, you know, along with our mayor. And Pride was so fun and I just wanna give a shout out, I mean, to all of you who worked so hard on it. I just showed up in my pirate costume. I didn't do anything. But they had, they choreographed a little dance and a song that we did at every intersection and so yay for the Pirates of Manor. It started off as just a fun gathering group, but they're really building community and raising money and, you know, kind of coming into, growing into a new, and I got to meet the sirens of Sharp Park too, which was super fun. We have such a great city. Oh, and then, sorry, just the fair was great too. And just this Saturday, I'm, my husband and I are offering tours of our house. We have 42 people signed up already. We have eight more spots open, 1:30 and 3:00 Saturday afternoon. If anyone wants to come, send me an email. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Oh, my goodness. So many of the things that have been mentioned, I also participated in. I try to make a list of the different meetings I attend and and not just to say, I went to this and I went to that, but just, you know, so I can remember, what did I even do? And I kept coming back to the Pride meeting line and putting another date and putting another date because, yes, we we did it, we set it up that way. We intentionally knew we would need to meet more frequently as we got closer. But then when you're actually doing it, it was just like, oye. So one meeting that I forgot that I attended was the bid meeting on the 24th of May. It wasn't a very detailed meeting, but it was, you know, Yulia gave, Assistant City Manager Carter gave a, an overview to the bid of where we are in our process and the different steps that have to happen with the hearing to enact what they asked us to do, what they asked the city to do. So that was not a terribly long meeting, but important. I had two meetings back to back, the Coastal Cities Group and the Local Government Workshop. The Coastal Cities Group is the statewide through the League of Cities, CalCities. And then the next day is the Local Government Workshop meeting, which is a different collaboration of people, including Coastal Commission members, commissioners, commission staff and League of Cities, CalCities staff from our Coastal Cities Group and also counties, coastal counties are represented. And one of the things that, as Councilmember Vardalas mentioned, right now everyone's looking at the ledge reports, you know, the legislative actions. And there are a couple of bills that we were watching closely to see what the impact might be for cities. And so I need to get an update to the city manager so he can share it out with everybody, to everybody about impacts that, what we, what we're seeking is for there not to be unintended cost consequences for the cities that we end up taking on. It seems like a great idea at the time until you read the fine print and realize it's gonna be the city that takes it on and we we can't. And so it's so important at this juncture for us to be working with the different staff members at the different organizations so they can talk to the staff at the legislators' offices about why these changes need to be made or, you know, what the concerns are. And then ultimately, if if they can make an adjustment, then the cities or the counties' organizations will write a letter of support or be neutral. But if they can't, then there sometimes are letters of opposition. So I'll give you an update on that next month or the next council meeting. But that's what we focused on the majority of our time. I did not go to the Council of Cities meeting and I didn't because I needed a minute. And in that moment, I had this great opportunity at the very last minute to go to see the School of Rock performance. And our city clerk Coffey's son, Keegan, was in that performance and did an amazing job. It was a terrific, terrific thing. And so for me, that's my little moment of of zen, my little moment of mental health was to just really do something completely different because I never have time for that sort of thing anymore. And that was terrific. The veterans event at the Legion Hall, I was so proud to see what our community has done together and thankful to the city staff for the help that they gave in terms of the guidance for permitting the requirements that the city said, you know, this is great when it was first dedicated, but oh, by the way, this tan bar that you have here around the base of the monument, it's not going to work for ADA compliance. And so graciously, there was an extension of time for the, those issues to be addressed and it's so much better now because so many people who, you know, themselves were peers with people who died at, you know, age 19 in Vietnam, themselves now, they don't, they're not, they don't have great mobility and they wouldn't have been able to get right up to the monument to read and see the names and the and the memorial dedication on the backside of the monument. So it's beautiful and I do agree with Councilmember Vardalas. Please stop by the Legion Hall on Buell Avenue and take a look. I had the opportunity to speak to a Boy Scout troop in Valamar on the 2nd about public service and what it's all about. And so that was great. And then that was the night before Pride. So while you were decorating at IBL, I was talking to the Boy Scouts and then went home and went, oye, Pride's tomorrow morning. It was just, mm. And so it was a great experience. There was a lot of moving parts, but I'm very pleased with how it all went, how it all came together. And then I literally laid out the whole next day on Sunday. I mean, kept getting up, okay, I don't know, went back to bed for two more hours. Okay, get up, back to bed for two more hours. So, yeah, I was pretty wiped out. Had the opportunity on the 6th to go to the Rotary Club Dinner Meeting and there was a presentation by a former Planning Commissioner, John Niblin, about the Office of the County Council, which he is the county council, and how they're interchangeably using the name, the Office of the County Attorney, because it makes more sense to people. Like, we have a city attorney, there's a county attorney. And that was very useful and beneficial and enlightening and he was lovely as always, I had a dual excitement last Wednesday with the Cabrillo School graduation, which is my day job, and almost right after that, going to the Beautification Advisory Committee meeting. We heard from them tonight and and they wanted me to say that the ongoing projects this month are working to get another Bio-Swale Workday together, possibly June 24th or 25th because they're big and there's a lot of work to do there to get the weeds out and do more mulching. But then in July, they'll be working on Grace McCarthy Overlook on Sharp Park Road. That's sponsored by the Rotary Club. And then in August, working on the Community Center planters. The one that's right by the driveway into the community center that's done by the Garden Club is just beautiful and the goal is to try to spiff up the other ones a little bit and work to get them adopted so that they can get, be as beautiful as those other ones. And then just lastly, the Bio-Swale Workday on Saturday was amazing. It was a great collaboration between the Beautification Advisory Committee members and the Cabrillo School PTO, adults and a couple of kids, but mostly adults. Just really worked well together and, you know, it was a lot of hard work and we didn't get very far because there's a lot to do, but the spirit was there and that's what we wanna see. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, lots happened over three weeks in time. We will be adjourning in honor of Jane Northrup. We'll also be adjourning in honor of Jeannie Matisiak, who we got word passed, I believe on Memorial Day, she was Allen Hale's daughter. So we'll be adjourning in honor of both of them. I'm very grateful that I got to see Jane at the farmer's market at Rockaway the Wednesday before I got word that she had passed. And we can certainly say more about them at the end of the meeting as we like, but we'll be adjourning in both their honors. Welcome Jack Burgett with the NCCWD, the Water District. We had report that someone's life was saved, a water rescue this week. We know one of the life buoys was used. Whether or not it was the determining factor, I couldn't tell you, but those things haven't been there very long and already they're being put to use. So there you have it. As usual, I begin by noticing the war in Ukraine and expressing the urge for it to cease for the sake of the Ukrainian people, which seems a good segue as per our conversation. At the last meeting, I did send that email for the ICANN project that the high school students were recommending, which is the international campaign to abolish nuclear weapons. Over the last several weeks, I've been talking a lot with Jonathan Cordero, who's the mitush of the ramitush aloni. He is going to be processing out of him lymphoma, so our prayers certainly go with Jonathan as he goes on that journey. And as he's worked with the city quite a bit over the years, in between his treatments, he'll work with us still as his energy will allow. I attended the Pacifica Resource Center Appreciation Lunch where there were representatives from Berman's office, Becker's office, Ray Mueller was there, really good lunch. Afterward, I had the opportunity to talk a little further with Berman's staff. His staff member, Elise, showed her a little bit some of our infrastructure needs here along the coastline. Attended the Charter's Ad Hoc Meeting with Mary, so we got some questions out that'll be coming to Ospac soon. Attended the Peninsula Clean Energy Meeting. The big thrust was the Diversity Equity Accessibility Inclusion Action Plan that we we formally passed through, which is the action plan based off of our DEAI policy, ours being Peninsula Clean Energies. We also talked a bit about budget and, yes, there will be excess funds and we'll be figuring out how best to deploy them for the sake of our mission, which is ultimately bring folks clean energy. In the meantime, rates will continue to be under PG&Es by 5%. And the next Peninsula Clean Energy Meeting will be on June 22nd at 6:30, which is a Thursday. Attended Council of Cities in Atherton. That was the third time I had visited, I think the third time I'd visited their library space. Again, it was a delight to see Christine's delight as well as enjoyed the company of our colleagues. But I was reminded the need that Pacifica has for a modern library. And pun intended, this was driven home somewhat earlier today when I was attending the library at Joint Powers Authority Meeting. And they were talking about the Maker Mobile, which is now ready to be displayed. It's gonna be rolled out, again, pun intended, to what is called Epicenter, which is in East Palo Alto. It's a play on East Palo Alto, Epa Center, which will be the site of their new library. And yay for East Palo Alto. I'm looking forward to that Maker Mobile coming to Pacifica so that the residents will have a sense of what they're missing out on by not having a maker space in our libraries. And also, it's rather remarkable because this Maker Mobile will be able to go to communities that are not as easily served by the library, such as Pescadero. And some of these, these programs that are available at libraries will be available to those who sometimes have more difficulty getting to them. So it's good news. Attended the American Legion Memorial Rededication at 555 Buell along with my colleagues. Attended Pacifica Pride. It was a lot of fun walking in the parade with my colleagues, including Josh Becker, Mark Berman, Ray Mueller. I took the opportunity to deepen my relationship with Mark Berman in this instance. It was a pleasure taking him around the various organizations represented at Inwood B. Lacy so that his understanding of what's going on in the community and what these organizations were doing was deepened. And then I got to reconvene with him at Josh Becker's campaign kickoff where I got to say hi to our say hi to our good friends Anna Shu and Kevin Mullen, and they are always good company to have. Ray and I did a sort of office hours at the Chit Chat Cafe on Monday. It was a, I'm going to call it a good attendance with a handful of community members who were interested in chatting with us, and it was a great conversation. So thank you, Ray, for coming out and buying us all coffee and facilitating that conversation. I met with some PCT representatives later on. I got it in my head that it might be an interesting idea to start a television program that will be run by whatever mayor happens to be sitting, whereby we invite local leaders from the region to come and talk about any given item that we don't have to hear on our agendas. So I was initially inspired by an idea that I would love to just have a conversation with Mary Beer about emotional intelligence, frankly, and to do that in a public setting, just having a conversation. And I figured some good information might come out of that. So we're looking forward to a taping date in the not-too-distant future. More to come on that. And then I watched the Planning Commission Meeting around the quarry later in the evening. Dave Crimmon had a single release party at NYX on Saturday, so I got to dance for Dave a little bit, just to say another one of those things to try and both be a proactive member of the community and do something for my mental health, energy in a positive way. And then this morning was that Library JPA Meeting, Joint Powers Authority Meeting I alluded to earlier, vis a vis the Maker Mobile. We are engaging in the second round of the California State Library Grant, so hopefully we can get some money either for an updated library or for renovating the Sanchez Library. Hopefully, good news to come on that, but we'll see. There will be a September study session on adult literacy and outreach. And then I was made aware that our Kevin Woodhouse is now the Vice Chair of the Operations Committee for the Library JPA, so congratulations, Kevin. So that's been the vast majority of my three weeks. Tomorrow, Kevin and I will give a talk at the Rotary Meeting at the Sharp Park Golf Course around the state of the city. I'm looking forward to attending July 4th festivities. Ray Mueller will be having, opening up his coastal office on Friday at, I believe, four o'clock at Harbor Village in Princeton, so I'm looking forward to attending that. There's going to be a Juneteenth celebration in Milbrae on Saturday, the 17th, at their recreation facility. I believe that's at 11:00 AM if anyone wishes to attend. Next OSPAC meeting is on the 21st, 6:00. And the next PCE meeting is on the 22nd Thursday, and that is my report. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I have two brief comments. The first is that we've been really promoting the recruitment for the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Task Force, as I know Council has as well. And so that recruitment is still out there for volunteers for this new task force. The deadline is noon on Friday, June 23rd. So it opened up on June 1st. There's about 10 days left. We only have one application in so far, so encouraging people to apply. I know people always wait till the last minute, so. But just to get that word out, and the application information can be found on our website under the Commissions and Committees page. I did want to, well, I think the mayor mentioned that bright and early tomorrow morning, we'll be presenting the same state of city address that we gave to the Democrats Club. We'll be presenting it to the Rotary Club tomorrow morning. And also to point out that slowly but surely, we are getting more Stephen Johnson photos on the wall in the council chambers. If everyone turns around, they may notice the two new ones on the back wall of the chambers. So more to come in decorating these chambers. And it is receiving, the chambers are receiving a lot of comments, I'd say anecdotally, from people that are here. We had a series of harassment trainings that employees have to go to that occurred here, and it's just becoming a nice and very usable room. So thank you for that. And that completes my comments.
I think that the public hearing on the bid will be fairly quick, so let's continue on to item number 10, and then we'll take a short recess after that before we get into budget. No. I mean, item number 10. It's consent. I actually. That was on consent. I thought the exact same thing when I walked in earlier today before looking at a, so you're not alone.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, public hearings. Item number 10, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the annual report from the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District or bid and assessing the levy for the fiscal year 2023-24 at the same rates as in the fiscal year 2223. Proposed action is to conduct the public hearing, rule on oral and written protests, if any, and then adopt the resolution confirming the report. Can we have a staff report, please? Hello, Yulia.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I promise to be very quick on this one. So the item before you tonight is a resolution confirming the annual report that was submitted by the Chamber of Commerce on May 15th and assessing the levy for the fiscal year 2324 at the same rate as the current fiscal year without change. Well, as we discussed at the previous council meetings, we have two parallel processes happening this year related to bid program. So the consent item was already passed earlier today that was related to the BID governance structure, and this public hearing agenda item is in line with our normal, regular annual process of levy assessment. So once you approve the resolution, it will allow the BID assessments to continue into the new fiscal year without interruption at the same rate as currently in place. So we recommend that you hold a public hearing, rule out oral and written protests. I believe there are none received, and adopt a resolution confirming the annual report and continue an assessment without change into the fiscal year 2324. That completes my report.
And I'll just add that we, the city has received no written protests at this point in time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council at this time? All right, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I have no cards. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come up and fill a card afterward. I see no one jumping up. Emily, do we have anybody on the phone lines who wishes to speak? Friendly reminder, you can dial in at 669-900-6833, webinar ID 811-5615-8241 pound, and press star nine to raise your hand. Emily, still no one on the line, no one in the audience. Then I am closing the public hearing.
So there are still no written or oral protests at this time.
Any further questions or deliberation from council before a motion is made? And shall we have a motion if not?
I'll move to adopt the resolution confirming the annual report of the Pacifica Hotels Business Improvement District Advisory Board and continuing the assessment without change in FY 2023-24.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
The motion made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer. Item number 10 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are going to recess until 9:30. We have no consideration items in one last public hearing for the evening. It brings us to item number 11, fiscal year 2023 Program Options, Master Fee Schedule and Proposed Budget. Proposed action, review and discuss the fiscal year 2023-24 proposed general fund and other funds budget, provide additional policy direction on the desired budget options and strategies for the upcoming fiscal year 2324 budget, and hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution with an updated master fee schedule. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'll kick off this presentation with some initial high-level comments before I turn it over to Assistant City Manager Carter to provide the detailed presentation. First, we're at a significant milestone in the budget development process in presenting you the proposed budget and the master fee schedule. And what I want to start with actually are some thank yous to Ms. Carter and to finance staff, to Lucy Shea, who's here, our Deputy Finance Director. The entire finance team has worked very hard over the last few months on the budget to get to this point. And also, the department heads are all here and maybe answering some more detailed questions that you have about items that they have in the budget. But the department heads have also, and their staff have also worked really hard to bring forth what is really, again, another milestone budget for Pacifica. And the reason that this is so important this year is because of the successful voter-approved Measure Y half-cent transactions and use tax. If that half-cent transactions and use tax measure did not pass last November, we'd be having a significantly different budget discussion right now because the success of that measure really helped close our $2.7 million structural deficit in order to just maintain our existing level of services. So some of the detail you're going to see in the proposed budget is that we were successfully able to maintain our existing level of services, unfortunately not to enhance them or to address some of the understaffing that the city has. But also, in accordance with the city council's strategic plan and some of the budget strategies that I recommended that the city council supported, there's quite a number of different recommendations that really do, I don't want to say enhance services, but they're enabling us to help deliver services better. And we'll go over each of those in detail and how they align with the council's strategies and goals identified in the strategic plan. So I'm really pleased we're at this point in this year's budget development process to present this proposed budget and some of the changes to the master fee schedule. And Ms. Carter will take it away from here and also talk about the next steps as well.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council, so we'll just jump to today's agenda slide. So today, we'll first walk you through some of the changes or adjustments to the base budget that we've made since the last meeting. We'll spend most of the time talking about budget program options, like City Manager previewed right now, and we'll talk about general fund, projected fund balance structure and budgetary reserves, touch base on the other funds, and also talk about master fee schedule updates. But before we do all of this, so I just wanted to bring you to the timeline in the budget development process, so you can see we're nearly at the finish line here. Today, we are holding a budget study session three. We will present you in a little bit the budget recommendations for the upcoming year, and we'll also ask you to hold a public hearing for the updated master fee schedule. And at the next meeting on June 26th, we will bring forward the formal, the complete budget, the proposed budget for formal adoption at that meeting. So just very quickly, I wanted to touch base on the budget methodology and recap in the steps that we follow in this methodology. So you may remember, we took the revised current year's budget, that we amended the mid-year budget review to establish the base budget for the upcoming year. So that budget, base budget is presented and developed at the current level of services. So that means we develop base budget revenues and expenditure assumptions. We presented them to you at the previous meeting. So all these assumptions are not decision points. It's more of a new cost for the current level of services. And I listed some examples here, like medical rates or purse rates, some inflationary adjustments. So in other words, we want to know how much the current level of services will cost us in the upcoming year. And we do it to determine either surplus or deficit for the upcoming year. And again, as City Manager highlighted, so thanks to the Measure Y passing, we are looking at the surplus, which is very positive news. And after taking this surplus or initial screenshot of the budget, we now develop the decision points for the service level changes in the budget. And that's where all departments worked really hard in putting together recommendations for the budget. The, all departments ranked their decision packages based on their priorities, and all the budget forms are listed in attachments five and seven to this report. And of course, City Manager ranked prioritized decision packages citywide and included his recommendations for the proposed budget, and again, summary of those recommendations in the City Manager's order of priorities are listed in attachment two. So here you can see the red steps are subject of today's discussion. And once we receive your feedback on any of them, we'll incorporate that feedback in the recommended budget and bring it back to you for adoption at the next meeting. So now, let's very quickly go over some of the adjustments that we made to the base budget. Again, since the last meeting, we've met with each one of the departments and went really deeply into the budgets and the base budgets and the recommendations for the upcoming budget. And during those discussions, we found a few items that needed to be adjusted. So the first one is very positive one, so it's adjustment in revenues. We found additional revenues that we included in the budget. And cannabis revenues actually showed some slowdown in the last year. We did reduce this budget at mid-year of the last fiscal year, and we carried it over in the base budget, but the current trends actually show that the budget can be adjusted back to original mark of $800,000. So that's what we did here. So in discussions with the PBNR Director, we actually reviewed revenues and expenditures and increased revenues by $205,000. And this is mainly because of childcare senior inaction and ocean pool programs projected to fully return to pre-COVID level. So of course, this revenue increase goes with some offset in expenditures increase related to part-time staffing, but still showing positive result of net revenue increase of almost $115,000. So the next one is. So the next one is related to adjustments in Fire Department. Again, with the discussion with the Fire Management Team, we found that last year's OES reimbursable overtime expense was carried over into preliminary base budget. And we typically don't budget for this. So this was carried over from the mid-year review of last year. So we removed this expense, but that allowed us to actually relocate portion of it into Fire Equipment Fund that we needed and adjusted the regular overtime budget by about $100,000 to account for cost increase related to normal contractual salary increases. And the next one is CIP project. So this project, Community Central Roofing CIP project, is actually budgeted in the current fiscal year. But the recent bids showed much higher budget, so we need additional appropriation of $210,000 for this project. And we recommend that this additional funds will be added to the current year CIP, and the funds will come from Disaster Accounting Fund. So we increased the budget to include that as well. And finally, some adjustments in wastewater operating expenses. So that's our wastewater operating fund. We increased that budget by about $93,000 to account for just increased cost of chemical expenses, large removal, and also higher utility costs. Again, everything you see on the slide is just the base budget adjustments. So this is, this are not the decision points. I mean, you may approve or disapprove it, but this is the cost of current level of services that we missed at the last meeting. So we just made this adjustment. But that brings us to the next few slides where we are going to be talking about service level changes for the upcoming budget. Again, all of them are, well, City Managers' recommended options. They're listed in the Order of City Managers' Priorities, and I'll just quickly go over them here. But again, as I mentioned, each one of these items has a corresponding form attached to your reports, and all of them are in Attachments 5, 6, and 7. And the summary of all this, all these changes, together with the cost, included in Attachment 2 as well. So the first one on the list is a two-year pilot program for the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team in Police Department. That includes funding for mental health clinician. Again, that's a two-year pilot program at the cost to general fund of approximately $140,000 a year. We listed this one time because limited to two years, but obviously it will carry over in the, if approved, it will carry over in the next year's budget as well. So the second one is replacement, again, another police item, so replacement of expired contract for body worn cameras with updated body worn and in-car antaser systems provided by Exxon. So that adds additional $100,000 to the general fund, and it is an ongoing expense. The priority number three includes purchasing protective gear and radio equipment in Fire Department. That's a little short of $400,000. That's a one-time cost, and again, Fire Equipment Fund will be used for that purpose. The next one is a funding of a three-year limited-term maintenance worker one position in Public Works. The annual cost for this item is about $122,000. We listed it as one time, but again, the recommendation is to carry this for three years. Next one is, is, you already saw some preview of this as a potential budget strategy. And again, all of the budget strategies that you saw in the previous report are actually carried over and now materialized in the, in the budget recommendations. So the item number five is funding of the project manager position in General Capital Fund. The cost is a little shy of $200,000, and the, the time of the project manager will be charged directly to the capital projects, minimizing the impact on the general fund. So this item, since we already presented the CIP project to you at the last meeting, so this, adding this position will not increase the budget or will not have direct impact on the general fund unless the project is directly charged or funded by the general fund. But we, we pretty much proposing the new way of funding the project management cost. So the next one is a policy decision. Again, we discussed it as part of a potential strategy at the last meeting, and now you can see it as a formal recommendation to start allocating about half of the, of the excess educational revenue augmentation funding, also known as excess IRA revenues that we receive every year. We propose splitting it half and half, and one half, about $1.7 million, will be going to Housing and Lou Fund to start accumulating fund balance in this fund to be used for developing affordable housing in the future. And the other half will remain in Disaster Accounting Fund. So that fund will continue accumulating fund balance as well. So item number seven is allocation of additional $500,000 in Vehicle Replacement Fund, Fund 72, towards the purchase of a new vehicle citywide. And again, we are following the vehicle replacement scheduled here. This purchase is one time. And again, that will affect Fund 79. The next item is also programmatic nature. So we're developing a short-term rental compliance enhancement program to include funding for the STR ordinance revision, additional, we will also proposing adding additional senior code enforcement officer and additional legal cost that we anticipate will be needed for potential disputes and any legal matters related to STR. And by doing all of this, we hoping to streamline regulation, provide the adequate enforcement to the program.
Yes. So my question for you is, and it's just a matter of title, senior code enforcement officer, is that a senior code enforcement officer in addition to Gwen?
Yes. So currently, we have code enforcement officer. It's one position for the whole city for all code enforcement issues. So this, the STR workload alone will require additional attention.
Does senior code enforcement imply a hierarchy in code enforcement, or?
Yes, Mayor, I could, I could respond to that. One of, one of the strategies here which aligns to the council's strategy about recruitment and retention of employees is here to create some mobility possibility within a small program. So you, you, it is a hierarchy. You'd have a senior code enforcement officer and a code enforcement officer. And so we're recommending the creation of the position funded out of this program at the senior level so that, that we can have recruitment and retention capabilities.
So presumably, there would be an application period for the new position when it opens, and then whoever goes wherever is how it works? Is that the idea?
I don't know the specific details on how we'll conduct that, but yes, something like that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, there will be recruitment for the position.
Thank you very much.
So the overall cost of the program, as we estimate it now, is about $285,000, but it will be partially offset by the increased STR permit fees. That is also included in the master fee schedule, and we asking you to consider for approval. And that increased STR permit fee will potentially generate up to $243,000 a year, assuming our cap of 150 STRs. So the total net cost of the program is going to be about $42,000. But again, this is all based on our initial estimate and the initial view, how we see this program. So we will definitely review this at mid-year and report to you how it's going and what, what is going to the plan. So the next one is allocation of $70,000 from available fund balance in Vehicle Replacement Fund, again, Fund 72, to fund initial deposit if required. So it's very likely that this deposit will not be required based on the specific terms of the lease. And this is for the lease purchase of a new fire engine. We are including this item because this approval of this item will also mean ongoing future commitment of about $125,000 of annual lease payment for the next 10 years, starting actually two years from now. But again, the, we need to preorder this in this current fiscal year to, in order to, for us to get it in three years from now. So that is considered to be one time. And again, Vehicle Replacement Fund does affect that here. The next one is allocation of $60,000 for the implementation of the Economic Opportunity Study. Again, this are the next steps we discussed during the EOC discussions and including the beach boulevard site and appraisal and some additional consultant services. The next one is additional six-month budget for Shop Pacifica and Vacation Promotional Budget. Just want to remind the council that the current year's allocation includes $50,000 of ARPA funds. These funds are no longer available for us to use in the future years. So we are asking to fund or continue funding these programs in the upcoming year for the partial, like six-month period at the cost of $25,000. And so the next one on the list is annual funding for citywide summer internship program. So I think we reported in the last meeting that we successfully hired the whole class of interns this year. And from what I hear, all departments are very happy with this choice. So we, we all excited to continue this program moving forward and want to start budgeting it moving forward for like 12 weeks for each department. So it's about $35,000 ongoing cost to general fund, about $5,000 per department. So the next item on the list is adjustment to salary range for the vacant recreation manager position. This position has been vacant for over a year now. We want to bring the salary closer to market to actually have some chances for successful recruitment. The difference in cost will be about $25,000. And I just want to highlight that we internally aligned the salary to the current manager level, so it's still below market. But we, we aligned it closer to, to what we have in the salary schedule. The next one is increase in citywide special event program. So another, another item from PBNR. We want to enhance the post-pandemic activities, just bring this positive community experience in Pacifica. And once fully developed, the program will generate additional revenues, but we are not including them right now into the budget because we want to see again how, how the program evolves and develops. But we are asking for approval for additional $30,000 as ongoing general fund cost. And along the same lines, so we are adding a new team program in the community center. Again, this program is starting, project to start in January 2024, when the rest of the city offices will vacate, hopefully, the community center, and will allow for this program to commence. And the PBNR Director estimates the increase in revenues of about $3,400 with additional expenses about $8,000. But again, the partial year, first year cost is net of $4,600. So moving forward, assuming that the program is successful, we should anticipate doubling this for the full year cost. And finally, increase in council's conference Australian budget. Again, we discussed it at the last meeting. So we just included your recommendation and increased the allocation from $23,000, which is, or was base budget before, to $38,000, just to, again, accommodate all the discussion that we had last time for each council member have adequate professional development activities.
And if I may just jump in for a moment, while that list was presented as being in some sort of priority order, I would like to comment that, take that loosely, because all of those items are important. So for example, city council members' professional development is very important. It's not 16th really on the, on the list. But I, I'm, and, and we're recommending all of those. So the reason for the list in order is that if the council wants to discuss and shorten the list, at least there's some sort of order to go off of. But they all are important in my mind, and I think in achieving the council's vision for, and, and goals, strategies.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. So we did include all 16 items in the budget. And after including all of this, so that's the bottom line that you see on the slide. This is your projected fund balance structure and budgetary reserves. I want to bring your attention to middle column. So that's our proposed budget. And in the last column, you can see the change over the, well, adjusted base. And again, the circled number here at the is our projected surplus after all these programmatic changes are included in the budget. One other thing I want to highlight here, that the capital transfer out $650,000. So that's the current fiscal year that we're moving from general fund into the capital. So this is considered to be one time cost. So it's not going to repeat itself moving forward. And now, if we, again, combine all of the assigned reserves and, and look at what, what all these recommended options will do to the general fund, unassigned fund balance, you can see we are projecting almost $8.5 million in undesignated general fund budget. So this is about 18% of the general fund operating expenditures, again, excluding one-time capital transfers. And this is slightly above the GFOA recommended, recommendation for the government entities of having no less than two month of regular general fund expenditures. So in our case, it would be about $7.9 million. That's a minimum recommendation of the GFOA. But again, you, I want to bring your attention to kind of middle box here, all the assigned reserves, including 10% policy level expenditures and facility maintenance, compensated absences, childcare reserves, and legal are on top of this $8.4 million of undesignated expenditures. So we don't have to spend much time on this slide. So it just repeats all the items that we already covered that are in other funds, not in general fund. And that brings us to the summary of the other funds. We currently have 30 funds within the city. All of them are combined in this five categories, but your attachment eight gives you fund balances, or estimated fund balances for each one of these funds individually. So with that, we can move to the master fee schedule update. So as we all know painfully, that the Consumer Price Index has been exceptionally high this year. So we're using December 2022 CPI, which was 4.9, to adjust our master fee schedule. And we also made some, but we, we actually reviewed our fees very closely. So in some cases, and you can see it, and you attach master fee schedule, some, in many, many cases, fees remained the same or were increased below the CPI level, again, depending what benefit the specific service provides to the community. So there are a few changes to the master fee schedule to highlight here. So the short-term rental application fee, permit fee that we already discussed. So currently, it is $158, so we are proposing to increase it to $1622. And again, Attachment 5 kind of covers a little bit more explanation of what, what we are planning to do with this and how it will benefit the STR program, compliance program in the upcoming year. in the upcoming year. Finances also added the credit and debit card service fee of 2.9%. Again, this is just strictly to offset the credit card processing companies billing of the city, so currently we unfortunately eating this cost, so we want to recover it moving forward and just want to highlight that customers can, all the customers can avoid paying these fees if they pay either cash or checks. There are few changes in PBNR departments, so the bouncy house fee, some activities related to recreation suite, machine pool rentals and pool party programs show lower increases than the CPI, again, for the same reason of providing greater benefit to the community. But we did feel that we needed to adjust some of these fees to support the rising cost of pool chemicals and staffing that the city has to absorb. So a few other minor adjustments, senior program replacement membership fee of $5. Childcare before and after school service fees also increased slightly, but again, still below the market rate. We added a new fee of $200. That's a nominal administrative cost of the surf camp program to charge nonprofit surf camp schools that permitted to run camps at the state beach. Again, this fee is significantly less than the regular small or large surf camp fees of 1175 and 1406 respectively. The commercial filming increased, fee increased by 300,000 to 1,200 per day. And again, this aligns with the market rate based on research, staff did. And in planning, a few additions in the general planning fee categories, so we added a new fee for tree permit of $1,000 that applies to removal, encrachment and significant trims that are not associated with the building permits. Also, the tree permit appeal of 577 is being increased from currently 426 and also adjusted to align with other city appeal fees. So that's the reason for, for that increase. Adjustments in building and permit fees based on valuation calculated based on the progressive rate structures, so which may be higher or lower than prior years. So you can see some fluctuations there as well. So the new fee for appeal of planning director and zoning administrator for admin approvals and zoning interpretations, that's a fee of 577. And in the plan check and other building permit category, staff adjusted the general plan maintenance fee. And again, the adjustment is made based on assumptions to accumulate about 1.2, 1.9 million over the next 20 years that would be needed for the update of the new general plan. And finally, there are some adjustments to the solar system fees. This fee is a cap government code and we reflected these changes in the master fee schedule. And that actually brings us to the, I think, last slide. So back to the next steps, again, we will take all your recommendations and all your additional direction for the development of the budget and bring it back to you for adoption at the next meeting.
It boggles my mind that y'all can put something like that together. Not only that you can put it together, but you can make it somehow digestible for those of us whose minds are easily boggled that you could put it together. Reading through the staff report, it's like, oh, okay. And I know that it's not that easy as you made it readable for us, so thank you. And thank you also staff for being available for all those follow-up questions that I know we all are asking. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I've got a light from council member Beer.
Yeah, I have a few questions. I'll start with number 14, which I'm really happy to see. It's very exciting, but I'm wondering how that will, like, how distribution of that would be decided? That's a special event budget of 30,000.
Yeah, and that, that's really a parks, beaches and recreation related item. So I could have Director Palacio describe more about that program.
Cool.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Big Stick. So when I first got here, I, I, one of the first things I looked at was our, our expense account for special events and it was at, you know, $17,000 for all special events in a city of this size, which is not close to what you actually need. For me, you know, being able to generate excitement about a community, pride in a community, you have to have these, these sort of special events and we need to elevate those. We also need to increase the number of those events that we were having. So for an event like Fourth of July, you're going to see additional amenities. There'll be some rides, there's different things for kids. We did the same thing in, for the spring event and we got a lot of positive feedback from community members and it's something that I think is important that we increase those numbers. People are coming up back after the pandemic, so we would spread those out throughout the year. 30,000 sounds like a big number, but when you start spending that on special events, as you all know, it's, it's a nominal figure, so.
Thank you. I didn't realize it was in your department. I think that made my question different because I thought that, I didn't know where it was. So I appreciate it. I appreciate all the work you're doing. Thank you for the teen stuff. Yay.
Thank you.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I ask a follow-up to, to that? Just with the presentation that was made from the Economic Development Committee and kind of asking for money, that also, street permits, I have no idea what those fees cost for like, for pride to, to block off the street and, and for our extra police and whether those are a lot. Okay. But, but that's, but this money is not for that. This is just for.
And I think that's why I asked the question. Because that's what I thought. I was like, oh, cool, but is it going to go to Fog Fest or is it going to go to, you know? So that's not this bucket.
Okay, so that would be a separate.
Yeah. That is, that is why I asked, so.
For sure.
And just to that point, I will mention that the Economic Development Committee, I believe, built into the base budget does have a small budget that helps fund special events that they plan as part of their work plan.
Well, that's for another discussion another day, I guess. I was happy to see the two-year pilot program for the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team. It's a pilot program. Can maybe we get like a little explainer, like some information about it, like what that'll look like? I'm just curious about it more than anything.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll, I'll have Chief Sarah Sua speak to that. It is recommended as a pilot. Generally, what I'll say is that this, the last couple of years, the, the five large cities in our county did pilot this kind of embedded clinician in their police departments. And now that, that's, I, I think, and chief, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's proven so successful and most departments are moving towards having this resource within the department. And we did look at the possibility of sharing this resource with other cities and each city is determining that their need is so significant that they, they want their own if they can afford it and, and we're recommending that. And certainly it's a pilot in the sense of we, we do want to see how it plays out and, and what the impact is before you were decide in the future if affordable that it could be continued. So chief.
And I really appreciate it. After the prioritization of the list, it was the first thing on the list.
Good evening, Mayor Big Stick and distinguished council members. This is really an exciting opportunity for our police department. There has been clear evidence that a co-response model reduces the likelihood that a use of force encounter will occur with a mental health consumer. It's a much more compassionate way of utilizing the expertise of a clinician to help de-escalate a situation when a mental health consumer is in a period of acute crisis. We do attend CIT training. It's not enough. It is not enough to provide the officers with the skills that they need to help deal with people that have mental health disorders and that are in crisis. Some of the data points that we would collect to determine the efficacy of the program would be whether or not there is a reduction in the, the calls for service that we get related to mental health consumers. How many calls are we going to? Is there a need? Initial data that we collected revealed that we responded to over 300 of these calls from May 2022 to May 2023. 150 of those resulted in, in psychological evaluation or 51, 50 hold. So with each one of those encounters, it really elevates the propensity that a call could have adverse outcomes and that's what we want to avoid. So really, the pilot program is just to gather evidence. And this week, I'm going to be meeting with Star Vista, who is a thumbs up good, who's really the clinician that, that we're looking for that as City Manager Woodhouse astutely pointed out, they have been the provider of five different agencies in San Mateo County that have started these grassroots efforts and have been very successful.
Beautiful. Beautiful. Thank you so much. That's awesome, right? Okay. And then one more, just one more. So the ERA funds, the excess ERA funds, while I completely understand the need for our Housing in Lou Fund, super important so that we could get housing, right? We're going to need that. But would it be possible to talk about maybe just giving a little bit more to the Pacifica Resource Center because as long as I can remember, that's been the amount that we've given them? And I don't know. I'm just bringing that up.
Well, if you're going to suggest such a thing, do you have a number in mind that you want to begin a discussion around?
Give me a moment on that and I'll think about it.
Is that your last question in the meantime? So while Mary noodles on that for a moment, council member Bowles, if you'd like to begin your questions.
Yeah, I have, I have a few. And, and thank you, City Manager and Yulia for the written answers to some of my questions earlier today. And thank you for your presentation. I, I mean, I can see how much work this is and, and how detailed you are and, and it is easy to understand and I appreciate that too. Item four, the maintenance worker for Public Works. One, one of the things I learned about in my training session this week is that our rangers, which are, who are responsible for beach maintenance and parking and so forth, and in other places where there are beach rangers also do education programs and, and things like that. They also look over our snowy plovers. In our city, they're also responsible for bathroom cleaning at the beaches and they don't like that very much. And we're, we're losing staff because of that and it's taking time from other things. So I'm just wondering if this maintenance worker might also be helping to clean our, our beach bathrooms, if that's something that.
I see Director Peterson approaching the mic, so I'll, I'll just turn it over to her.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bowles and all council members. Yes, so that is something that they could help with, absolutely. I think our goal ultimately is because we were able to figure out in our budget how we could actually get a contract service to come in and hopefully service some of those bathrooms. But in the meantime, that will certainly be one of the, the tasks that we would have them do and I think that would be a big relief to our rangers.
Okay, thank you. That sounds wonderful. Oh, and don't go away. Sorry. On item seven for the, for the vehicles, do we ever try to sell the old ones or would we ever recoup some of the money that we're spending?
Yes, yes, we do. Those go to auction.
Okay, okay. So that, but those are typically small amounts that don't necessarily show up in the.
But the, any proceeds will go back to the vehicle replacement.
Oh, I see. Okay. Got you. Let's see. Sorry. Oh, my notes are all mess. If somebody else wants to go, I'm sorting through my notes, but.
Mayor Protem.
I had a question about the tree fee because there was no previous tree fee. It just seems so high to start to charge $1,000 to remove a tree. And are, is it specific, what if your tree is dead? Is this, the people, if a, if a dead tree costs 100, I mean, $1,000 to cut down, people aren't going to do it.
Good evening again, Honorable Counsel. Planning Director Christian Murdock. I want to first point out that trees that are dead are exempt from the tree permit requirement under the municipal code. So to remove a dead tree that might pose a hazard under those circumstances would not be subject to a tree permit and thus would not have to pay the fee. What this fee that we've recommended reflects is the complexity of implementing the tree protection ordinance that the council enacted last year. So we've had some time to work with it now that the ordinance is in effect. We've brought online a contract arborist who can actually help us review the technical aspects in a way that we haven't had the ability to do for some time. And when taking into account the level of effort required to intake, to route, to review, to route back, to review again and so on, as well as accomplish the posting requirements and the administrative requirements to reflect the final approval and in some cases, post-removal inspections, it's time intensive and the fee reflects the cost recovery associated with those tree permits that are not part of another type of application such as a building permit or some other type of discretionary permit that goes to the planning commission. So it is a costly ordinance to administer and the proposed fee reflects that.
Okay, so it's just if I decide I want to cut down a great tree, then.
So this fee would be for removal of a tree or substantial trimming that constitutes a regulated activity under the ordinance that's not associated with some other activity that necessitates that removal or significant trimming. So for instance, if you're doing a, a project on your home, that tree permit review and the costs associated with it would be rolled into the building permit process. But if you just want to cut down a tree because you don't like the tree, this would be the permit fee associated with that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? I'm, I'm a little concerned about the cost too, especially for trimming and, and obviously, you know, there are fire risks of, you know, trees too close to houses and so forth that we want people to trim. So, so what is your definition of significant trimming and?
I would need a moment to pull up the ordinance. There is a quantity of the existing tree that's defined in the municipal code.
Okay. So a little trimming might, might not, might be okay, but.
A little here, a little there, probably wouldn't need a tree permit, but significant trimming would and the idea is to make sure that significant tree trimming is not going to imperil the health of the tree.
Does anyone else just get the image of a tree barber in their head?
Like an Edward Scissorhands kind of thing, right?
The pole the size of a redwood.
So the, the threshold's 15% of the tree.
Okay, that's not that much. Yeah, it does seem like a lot for, for that, that people either wouldn't get permits or, or might not trim their trees when, when we need them to.
It might make them not cut down a tree.
Well, I mean, cutting down, I'm okay with the fee. I'm just saying for trimming, I don't know, maybe that could be reduced or.
So mayor and council, I just want to be clear that the cost is the cost. The question is, are we recovering that cost from the applicant who's requesting the permit and, and doing the work or is the city subsidizing that? So it doesn't make it less expensive, it's just a question of who's paying for, for the work to be done.
Okay, got it. Okay, got it. On that question, don't go away. Sorry, not on that question.
If all the staff wants to be in the front row.
On item eight, on the STRs, on the other hand, we're proposing to increase fees, but not enough to cover the costs of the enforcement. And so could we? Or I guess my other thought is, you know, it's not, a lot of the enforcement, it's not necessarily all of the people that are, you know, have STRs that are problematic. You know, we do have 60 that are fully licensed now. Is there a way to charge a penalty instead, you know, to help recover this cost? Or not instead, but in addition, yeah.
I suppose that could be an option. I think there are a number of practical challenges with taking that approach. One is that the city's overall code enforcement approach is to achieve voluntary compliance. So we issue very few citations for violations of the municipal code. And we strive to educate and to encourage property owners and others to comply with the code outside of a formal punitive process. And so that would be a shift in our overall code enforcement approach, unique to short-term rentals. I think the other issue is that to pursue a much more punitive process is likely to increase the number of appeals of those enforcement actions, which has a proportionate increase in staff resources committed to upholding the city's action and participating in the appeal hearing process, which on occasion progresses to legal action in court as well. And so we need to be mindful of the commitment of resources that would come with that. It could have a counterproductive effect in terms of making resources available on the street, so to speak, to go out and investigate and to follow up on complaints or concerns about short-term rentals.
I understand, but I mean, I don't know how long we've been working on the enforcement and getting people to work on, you know, having the proper business permit and short-term rental permit and paying their transit occupancy taxes. But it seems like, it seems like we've been doing this for a year or so. You know, it was before I came on. And the fact that we have 160, Jen Hansen's numbers were 190, potential operating STRs, and we only have 60 that are permitted, I don't know, it leaves me to believe that the being nice isn't working for everyone. And so, you know, if it's not a fine, then maybe it's consideration of revoking, you know, whatever permits that we have. Anyway...
So I'll finish my final point on the practical challenges of a penalty-based funding. It also provides an inconsistent source of revenue to sustain a code enforcement officer position for the STR enforcement program. And so it may be difficult to employ someone part-time or sporadically to do that work. Or it would require a commitment of other general fund sources to offset those revenues that might come in very inconsistent amounts and at very inconsistent points in time. As it relates to the question or the point you made about 60 versus 190 or whatever, you know, the number may be in terms of operating versus permitted, I think the enforcement story is a little more complex than that. There are code enforcement investigations that have been occurring related to sort of quality-of-life concerns. That's one batch. Those are primarily driven by our code enforcement officer among her myriad of other municipal code violations and complaints to investigate. The other component of it is the registration and permitting and taxation component, which is primarily not handled by code enforcement. It's through the STR Program Administrator, which is defined as the Assistant City Manager, Yulia Carter. And so that's a separate process that isn't directly related to this code enforcement officer capacity program that's been proposed. And so there is cooperative work and coordination that's associated with each of those, but they're distinct in their resourcing and their funding and their intended purpose.
Okay.
And I just want to add to this that the program is still very young, and we don't have the funding for this program yet. So we're trying to use the HDL resources and staff resources to actually identify those properties. And we're still in discovery zone. So once we reach the cap, the program will streamline naturally because in order for somebody else to get the permit, somebody will have to drop out. So now we're still chasing down all the new illegally potentially operating STRs. And compliance, as Director Murdock mentioned, is very complex because we're talking about business license, short-term rental permit fees, and the TOT. So we have all kinds of variations of different STRs, compliant on some, but not compliant fully.
So for now, we're still accepting applications for new short-term rentals and business license beyond the number that you've identified that are currently operating?
So for now, we haven't reached the cap yet. So the cap, so the 60 STRs that are fully compliant account against the cap. So the remaining 109 are in some form of compliance. And the HDL is sending them different letters depending on the specific situation. So we're actually working with HDL right now to change the procedures and streamline them a little bit now since we have a firm cap process. So this work is ongoing.
And if I could clarify, I believe that while we may be receiving applications, we have not issued any new STR permits.
Okay, okay.
And the one clarification I'd like to make to Mr. Murdock's comment about our seeking voluntary compliance, the exception to that is as we proceed with the audit and enforcement of compliance in the STR program, that's, we're going to need to take a hard line there on back taxes and business licenses that don't exist in order to bring those into compliance. So I would say that getting this program at the baseline operational level moving forward so that we're clear about where we are relative to the cap and as we move into the council's work on revising the STR ordinance in the future, getting it to that baseline level is gonna, is gonna take some very specific enforcement action.
Okay, good. I appreciate that. Just as a follow-up question, so the budget assumes that we have 150 paying STRs, but supposedly we only have 60 right now? So this $42,000 deficit might actually be bigger than that? As we go forward for a while?
So this whole program is new as we see it right now. So the new STR permit, if even place and part of the master fee schedule, will, even those 60 that already have a permit, they will be subject to renew, right, at the higher rate? So that's why we included all 150 STR eventually that we will going to get at this higher rate. But again, as I mentioned before, we will bring this program back to you at mid-year just with some update, like what, how it's going and where we are.
I very much appreciate this being in the budget and consideration for a new code enforcement.
Right, that's the way we see it now. So again, the reality may, we may need to adjust a few things here and there.
Right, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-on question? Since we're on the subject of STRs. I realize that we're working out the parameters, I guess I could say, of the program because we know that we have some sites that are, you know, one-bedroom, maybe two-bedrooms, then we have others that are larger. And I'm wondering if there is an opportunity to have a fee structure that, much like in the planning fee structure, if the value, it looks like, of the building permit fee is valued incrementally? If it's a more complicated, you know, plan, I presume, that you're evaluating? Similarly, I'm imagining a larger whole-home STR with more bedrooms that sleeps 12 to 16 people could be... I mean, we can't say for sure, but it seems logical that it might generate more calls for service, more complaints, et cetera. If it's a larger property, is there an opportunity or a reason to consider a tiered fee structure of some kind to help recoup the costs of those code enforcement issues that may not pertain to every property equally?
Yeah. I think that when council undertakes the work and staff undertakes the research related to lots of STR ordinance revisions coming up, a significant amount of those also may relate to improvements related to enforcement. I think that would be the time to dig into any kind of tiered fee structure that you may want to try to justify. At this point in time, we don't really have the information to recommend that. You know, we do, in the responses, we indicate that we're not aware of any hosted STRs in Pacifica under the traditional definition of hosted, where the owner is there the whole time. So they're mostly unhosted. And to draw, to try to draw a distinction between, you know, a two-bedroom place and a four-bedroom place gets a... There's a lot of legalities and more analysis that I think would need to go into that kind of tiered structure. But it may be something that the council wants to direct in the future when we're really looking at this program holistically. I think what you have before you is our best attempt at starting a fee structure to set an expectation that is a good balance of where we see the permit fee. I mean, we did look at other agencies' STR permit fees, you know, so that we're in the realm there. And this is a starting point and can be adjusted in the future unless the council were interested in something different and not starting at this starting point.
And so just to refresh, what we're talking about is on packet page 390, and that is the short-term rental application fee, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And that's increasing from $158. That was adopted in 2022, '23 to the proposed amount of $1,622.
Correct, yeah.
It's not a yearly fee? It is, right?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
It's a renewable permit.
It only amounts to $135 a month. I mean, it looks like a big fee, but at $135 a month, for someone who's doing short-term rental, it's nothing.
Yeah. Well, this is where, like, the hosted and unhosted. If someone just rents their house for a little while when they're on vacation, you know, whatever, there are differences that we can look at it. But I love the idea of a tiered system, too.
I guess I'm just, I think, I'm not sure if I'm correct. You were bringing up Councilmember Bowles, the fact that we're, the way that these proposed amendments to the budget were structured, that we weren't recouping all of the cost under item eight, right? The $42,000 general fund cost is not covered by these fees effectively.
Correct, but this is just estimated cost of the program. So if we want to be safe, right, on this way, we don't want to over-recover the cost as well. So that's why we're suggesting this fee, well, I mean, STR permit fee will for sure offset the cost of the program. But we for sure know that we are not going to over-recover the cost. But again, the updates on the program will be coming to you at mid-year. And additional analysis will probably happen at that same time.
But we don't amend our fee structure mid-year. That's an annual thing, correct?
Correct, yes. But we can still provide you on how the program is going, where we are with this, and update on the cost and the revenue received, right? And then as we do it at mid-year, you will be better equipped to make decisions in the next budget cycle.
And again, I think one point is, I mean, to, as the starting point that we're determining the balance of arriving at that justification for that dollar amount, you know, for example, we know we need to take, undertake the ordinance work and revisions as directed by the council. The existing STRs out there didn't ask us to do that, right? So, you know, there's a portion to this program implementation that we have to balance what we can actually charge to the fee.
I understand, thank you.
Councilmember Bowles.
So I'm still learning. I don't quite understand when we need a nexus study to look at new fees. I mean, I see there's some new fees that we've added to the budget here. And given that the council has prioritized affordable housing and an affordable housing fund, one of the things I noticed, just looking at San Bruno's fee schedule, is that they, as part of development applications, they charge an affordable housing fee on a sliding scale, you know, depending on what kind of project it is, a single-family home, a condo, an apartment building, an office. Is that something that would need a nexus study? Is that something that we could consider adding?
Yes, that is something that would require a nexus study. Any, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Didn't know where to look.
Before, and Mr. Murdock may be able to elaborate a little bit. Yes, any fee that's related to development, so they're called development impact fees. They do require a formal study so that they can be applied uniformly to all development. And then, you know, there are different categories for different types of development. And it's all based on what is the nexus of the impact associated with that development to the potential impact, like affordable housing.
Precisely. And to compare it to some of the other fees you see in the proposed fee schedule, many of those are based on a fee that's already been calculated based on a prior study for hourly staff time. And so where that's essentially the cost of the service times some amount of time, we have not identified that the nexus study is required in those instances. But for an entirely new fee based primarily on something other than a cost we've already calculated, a nexus fee would absolutely be required.
And can you give us an idea of, like, what the staff time and commitment would be to undertake something like that? In particular, for an affordable housing fee?
It could be quite robust in terms of the amount of time involved in preparing a nexus fee of that sort.
And I would say that generally, we would advise, we, the City Attorney's Office, generally advise staffs to hire a consultant to prepare the nexus study. It's very specific, and not surprisingly, they get challenged. And so we need to make sure that they are precise, robust analyses and defensible.
And I'll say, just given the costs associated and the level of effort associated, it has been the case more than once in recent years that cities have actually partnered regionally through the 21 Elements Collaborative to undertake impact fees, like commercial linkage fees, for example, to spread that cost. A lot of the sort of regional data analysis can be common across the region. And then, you know, dialing that in specifically is sort of a minor customization cost as part of that package. There is not one proposed currently that I'm aware of that we could participate in. So we would likely need to undertake that individually as a city, which would significantly increase the cost and the project management component from staff, as City Attorney Kenyon mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for looking into San Bruno.
And then, my other question is maybe not related to the budget based on the answer I got from the city manager, but I see Ron Myers is in the room. I'm really trying, and so I was asking about the fire truck costs and just trying to understand what kind of vehicle we need. And especially as we're considering increasing density and building heights, you know, just trying to understand at what point we need to start to think about having our own ladder truck for taller buildings. And I know that, you know, as part of the Sharp Park specific plan discussion, it was okay to rely on Daily City for that. But, you know, as we, if we start to increase height down in Lindemar, where it's a longer drive and there's more traffic, or, you know, the number of buildings that are above a certain height, or what that certain height is, just to understand what would trigger that as we're looking at, you know, refining our housing element in the next few months.
Welcome, Chief. It's good to have you with us tonight.
Good evening. So I think the basic question is that you're not required to ever have a ladder truck. So there is no requirement out there. It's what you can afford, it's what you want to provide in the level of service. I would not recommend that you buy a ladder truck. We have ladder truck service as part of North County Fire Authority. It's $2.5 million to buy a ladder truck. It's another $3.5 million a year to staff one. So I don't see a need for it. I don't, and there is no requirement for you to have a ladder truck. So there's not something we're going to come across that says, today you have to buy a ladder truck.
So if we're building...
So if we're building five, six, seven stories, that's okay with the equipment that we have here and regionally through you.
Yeah, exactly. And there are cities in this county that don't have ladder trucks, and they can't afford a ladder truck. So there is not, and the higher you go, the less effective a ladder truck's going to be anyway.
And buildings are built with sprinklers and better fire standards.
Right, that's how, that's how you basically deal with your development. You make sure you pre-engineer it and you make it so it's fire-safe through engineering.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions from council? I'm going to open it up to public comment. I have no cards in front of me. I seem to have one member of the public properly, and she's not jumping up to come and speak. Emily, do we have anyone on the phone line?
We have one raised hand. It is from Suzanne Moore.
Wonderful. Suzanne, please press star six to unmute or the Zoom equivalent. Please state your full name for the record, and I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Thanks, Tiger. Suzanne Moore from Manor and member of Pacifica Housing for All. And I am grateful for the staff's recommendations of two budget items. The first is the use of 1.6 million of ERAF funds toward our housing in lieu fund. As we consider re-designation of city surplus land, these monies can be tapped to assist nonprofits to create below-market housing so desperately needed in our community. However, the PRC's work should not be underfunded, and I believe the PRC funding should be prioritized. Since there's an anticipated chronic need for affordable housing, I'd support evaluating other dependable funding sources for affordable housing fund. Other communities are successfully using a vacancy fee, which encourages property owners to keep their units occupied or provides housing funds from vacant units. Second, I'm in favor of the two-year pilot for Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team. This model has been successful in other communities to respond to calls for assistance involving mental health, homelessness, and substance use at a most critical moment, when folks are most ill, most desperate, and most at need. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
There are no other raised hands.
Last opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak. Closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council for council deliberations and any further questions. Councilmember Beer.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So Suzanne just sparked something in me because she said $1.6 million for the in lieu. And then there's $73,750 that maybe could go to the Resource Center, and it would just be 1.6 million, and the little extra there could go to the Resource Center. I know how much it costs to run a program, and $83,000 is nothing.
So specifically, how much are you suggesting?
Oh, well, right here, it's $73,750,000.
So you're suggesting an extra $73,000 to PRC?
Hey, you know.
I'm just making sure I know specifically what you're asking.
Well, I was just looking at the number, right? So 1.673750. Rounding it, just rounding.
I'm okay with that, and I think that's a really good idea for doing so much in our community, and there obviously have space needs to be able to serve our community better. I'm just so excited that we have this housing in lieu fund at all here, and I just, I forgot to say this when I met with Habitat, that's the first question they ask, how much money does the city have? So, and that's where, I mean, Suzanne's idea of the vacancy fee, looking at a nexus study for housing and other ways that we can help to build that fund in the future, this isn't part of our discussion today, it'll be really important.
I have a question for the city manager in terms of this topic of increasing the Resource Centers, the allocation to the Resource Center. Would the contributions from the city to any non-governmental organization come from excess ERAF generally in the way we do our budget?
So right now, the way excess ERAF works, and this was a council policy decision years ago, was that the two non-governmental organizations the city contributes to out of excess ERAF is the Pacific Resource Center and the Pacific Beach Coalition. And that money, insofar as we're receiving excess ERAF in any given year, because it's not guaranteed that it would be received in future years, we carve out 83,000 for the PRC, 5,000 for the PBC, and then the remainder goes into the Fund 38 Disaster Accounting Fund, or at times have been used for other priorities. So we're talking about here, splitting that remainder between Fund 38 and the Housing in lieu fund. The city does contribute minorly to other nonprofits annually. I think off the, I don't have the list in front of me, but off the top of my head, I think we give $1,000 a year to Sustainable San Mateo County. I think we give a small amount similar to that, or 1,500 or so, to Hart, I believe, at least one of the affordable housing entities in the county. So there's a collection of just over time incrementally, the city has sort of done this, you know, I inherited it, that, you know, hey, how much do we, we got this request, how much do we donate, et cetera. So I'm not, as your city manager, at a point tonight to make a reasoned recommendation about NGO funding to the council. Council has a prerogative to do whatever you would want to do with the funding, but there are, and occasionally there are requests that come up, how about this cause, how about this cause, how about this cause, how about this cause? And we've never had the opportunity to sort of sit down and look at it holistically, mainly in part because, you know, we struggle with our own finances, and we still are, definitely. So that's why, you know, I'm not in a position to make a recommendation about this. In terms of the PRC, what's built into this budget is the annual 83,000, and then the 125,000 for the Temporary Safe Parking Program that we are committed to for, this would be the second year of the three-year program.
Did you say 125 is going to PRC for their implementing of the Safe Parking Program?
The additional program.
Sorry, 125 per year, right?
I understand.
What's that?
120.
120, sorry, I was five off. Yeah, 120. Thank you.
The first time I ever walked into this council chamber, and I apologize for those of you who have already heard this story five times, Anita's heard it at least 27 times. And I wandered in with an ask about plastic bags, and my friend, a couple of my friends were here advocating for PRC, which, at the ripe old age of 27, was an organization I'd never heard of before in my life. And in that moment, I was moved to take a minute of my three minutes and say, oh, this PRC thing sounds pretty darn cool, you should definitely keep them in your general budget. And thankfully, the Resource Center was successful that night, and several nights and years subsequent to that, until we came to a place in which, after a long, difficult deliberation, the compromise was reached, and bear in mind, at this point, I'm sitting on the Board of Directors, well, we're going to take the PRC out of the general budget, but we're going to keep them funded through ERAF. The downside of that is, as a board member, I was thinking, well, that doesn't sound as secure. The upshot was, and Lorenzo's voice still echoes in my head, council direction is clear that you view this as a priority. So after a very long, personal history of keeping very specifically abreast, even to the point of not knowing the organization and still advocating that they be kept in the general fund, you know, my first time out the gate, A, I like your idea, and it's something that fundamentally I have interest in supporting. My concern is, because ERAF is the way we fund them, and that is one-time money, and especially given recent state budget concerns, I have a great deal of respect for our governor, and I am not sure whether or not his budget requests in the future will take away that pool of cash which is not guaranteed, from which we fund PRC, and because I continue to have Lorenzo's voice echoing in my brain, that it is clearly a council priority. My concern is very specifically, I think that council would choose to continue funding even without ERAF. I think it would make figuring out budget a little bit more difficult, but I think it likely would be doable, and frankly, I think it would be the direction of council, at least as I understand our makeup in recent past and these days. My concern is, if we almost double that amount of money and ERAF goes away tomorrow, I'm concerned about the conversation around maintaining the funding at that level, should we increase it that much right now, given that ERAF is the pool of money from which we're increasing it. I have absolutely no lack of desire to increase funding, but that specifically is my concern, that I don't want to give them something and then take it away. And, you know, Anita's in the audience, I could certainly reopen the public hearing if she has any input. After our last council meeting, in which a similar notion was brought up by Councilmember Bowles, I did turn to the Board of Directors at the next available meeting and say, well, I actually kind of tried to dissuade us from that conversation because, for these reasons. But given that one of the elements of feedback I heard was, well, PRC hasn't asked the city for more money than what we're giving right now, I said to the Board of Directors, y'all might consider what a reasonable ask from the PRC's perspective would be. And again, Anita, would you like me to reopen the public hearing for a moment so you have a chance to weigh in?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm going to reopen the public hearing and invite Anita to come up and speak, and anyone else who would like to speak on the topic of PRC.
Thanks so much, Tiger, for bringing up that, what you shared at the board meeting. I think that we have gotten $83,000 for maybe 20 years. So for that reason, I think that it would make a lot of sense to increase, and maybe what we start with is an increase of the CIP, right? It doesn't have to be huge. And I think that what it does is it shows a commitment from the city to continue to grow as need grows. And, you know, we're not asking for a huge amount of money. I think that we have been fortunate to be able to raise funds in a way that sustains our programs. But I do think that the city being able to say, we believe in the work that is being done to support the community and to promote the well-being of all of Pacifica, would say a lot. I think that that's one of the things that we've been able to kind of go to our funders and say that the city believes in the work that we do and supports our community. And this is one of the ways that the city does it, amongst all of the other programs and supports that you already provide to the city. So I think that that would be a good show of faith, right, to show that after 20 years, you know, at least we're inching it up a little bit, given the higher cost of everything in the community. And I appreciate, Mary, you, or Councilmember Beer, for suggesting that. I was like, whoa, that's more than I would ever anticipate, but appreciate the thought and having the conversation, definitely.
Thank you, Anita. I don't see anyone else in the audience who might want to speak. Is there anyone on the phone line? I am closing the public hearing once again.
How about 100,000?
Mayor Big Stick, can I interrupt with a time check? It's 10:56.
Good interruption. Who would like to make a motion?
I move that we extend the meeting, we're almost done, right?
To what time?
To 11:20?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion to extend the meeting to 11:20 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. So you were proposing?
100,000.
So I think we've been.
From 83.
We've been working off of 4.6 CPI, which would be 3,818 from 83 if we were going by the executive director's recommendation. If we rounded up to 5%, that would be 4,150. I just want to throw that number on the table because that was the recommendation.
Oh, no.
100,000, you say?
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that number personally.
And that's higher than CIP, right?
Yes.
I don't know about 20 years' worth of CIP, but, you know.
More analysis required.
So would the proposal be to increase to 100,000 with the expectation that that's the ongoing give to support the PRC in addition, adding the CPI piece?
So personally, I'm not committed to an ongoing CPI raise tonight, but I do think, as, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Protem, that 100,000 would be the number going forward, with or without a CPI adjustment.
My concern is that I want to find a way to fund some other non-governmental organizations such as Coast Pride. And I don't know where that comes from exactly, and I want to make sure we don't cut off the possibility of doing that. So it seems like there's enough, but the city manager did say that he's not prepared to have a robust conversation about this, obviously tonight, since we're bringing it up. I wonder if perhaps there's an opportunity at mid-year to evaluate this, or is there some way that we can dial in where there may be some opportunity for other NGOs, such as Coast Pride?
Well, and I think one of the challenges is that all of the nonprofits in Pacifica didn't know this conversation was going to happen tonight, right? So if it's going to happen in the future, then they could be noticed about it. I mean, you have to go through a process. If I could compare it to, if we were a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant organization, often they have an annual application process in a city that is taking CDBG monies and funding non-government organizations, at least based on my experience on what happened in Mountain View. And so there was a known annual process, you could have new applications that come in in any given year, decisions made during budget on how to apply those CDBG funds. We don't have anything like that. We have a legacy system, you know, that out of our excess ERAF, two NGOs are funded, et cetera, and we haven't put the question out there about what are the funding needs or the interests. So, you know, it's all for council decision. I don't think there's a problem with council deciding, well, in this budget, we want to increase this one, and then maybe mid-year, we want to look at a process to see where we're at and whether other organizations, you know, whether we want to donate to other organizations. So, long-winded answer.
Okay.
That was a good answer. Good answer.
Mm-hmm.
So now, where are we?
Well, I would be willing to support 100,000. But I also want to talk about Coast Pride.
And Falk Fest.
So I am hearing that a study session on the topic at some point in the not-too-distant future, perhaps mid-year budget would be in order? Does that sound?
Does that seem?
When you say not-too-distant future and mid-year in the same breath, that's six months.
As in?
I'm sorry, for me, like, three-year timeframe is in the not-too-distant future. Great. If anybody has a different timeline recommendation, I heard mid-year might be a good place.
Mid-year seems logical to me because then we'll have a better understanding of where we are. You just get, you just know, you, all of the assumptions that are being made now, you have half of a year's worth of experience to adjust. So for me, and of course, along the same lines, knowing when Pride falls, it gives enough time for there to be a discussion that could be fruitful. enough time for there to be a discussion that could be fruitful in supporting that effort.
Yeah, and I appreciate you talking about Pride.
And then, of course, there's the Falk Fest.
Yeah.
And related to that future discussion and how a process would ordinarily play out, I mean, part of that application process is to know what is the pro forma of the organizations that are requesting funding? What is their, I mean, we heard the annual report from PRC tonight. We know what they do, but also what are the financials of those organizations? So they're not all created equal, so to speak.
I heard consensus from four council members. I think I have, okay, very good. So with that mild adjustment, are there any other points of discussion, questions, deliberation? If not, would anyone like to make a motion?
Where is it?
I don't have it in front of me.
It's closed.
Oh, wait.
I will. I move that we adopt the proposed budget as presented tonight, with a minor adjustment of increasing the Resource Center budget amount from 83,000 to 100,000.
And adopting the resolution.
Oh, yeah, the resolution.
Approving the master fee schedule. That's really the most important.
And adopting the resolution approving the master fee schedule.
I'll second.
And I think, just to clarify, actual adoption of the budget is at the next hearing, so it's providing input.
So it's budget recommendation?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please vote.
And with the motion made by councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by councilmember Beer, the motion passes five to zero unanimously.
So before we all go home, as was said prior, we're adjourning the meeting in honor of Jeanne Matisiak and Jane Northrup. Before we adjourn, would anybody like to say a word, tell a story? Just want to give a little space to remember someone. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I would like to say how much Jeanne Matisiak meant to me personally and to this community in terms of the service that she provided. She was always a yes. If you needed help with anything, it was a yes. And often, it wasn't, you didn't need to ask. She was just there and would jump in. And I have still having a hard time adjusting to the reality that she's no longer with us, because it feels like the world's a little less bright without her. So she was very special, and her family is, her father, Alan Hale, is very special to this community, and Jeanne's loss is great. So it's been a hard few weeks, learning, as we did, at the Veterans Rededication. It's been very hard to comprehend. And then with Jane, I always go back to, I mean, she did so much informing the community for so many years. But one of the things that I'm personally so grateful for her work on was her development of the Schoolhouse Rot video through PRC, and the difference that made in putting our very first bond vote over the top for Pacifica School District. I mean, it was an apt name. There were significant structural challenges with the buildings, but it was her work on that that really opened people's eyes and helped, I think, explain why it was so necessary to have that. So grateful to both of them.
Councilmember Beer.
I want to kind of piggyback on your comments about Jeanne, because one thing I really appreciated about her is that she would ask the hard questions, and at the really appropriate times. And so I learned a lot from how she led, in all the different hats that she wore, so I am absolutely going to miss her, too. And I know a lot of folks in the school districts especially are really distraught about her, about the loss of such a, she's so smart. And with Jane, you know, sweet Jane, like, when we have someone in our community like that, who's, she's like a staple, you know, like, she would always be there, just reporting on every single thing, and she would write her little notes, and, you know, she would, we'd have extra-long phone conversations, and she helped report about, you know, my family and the partnership that we created after that, and all the prevention work. I don't know, she was just super special to me, and I'm really sad, and I'm really going to miss her. And I'm glad that we got to honor her when she retired, because that was a really special day and a special event. Yeah, love you, Jane.
I think the other council members said it very well, and I will miss both of them, too, the Scouts, all of those things that Jeanne did, the paper for Jane, and they're special. Thanks.
I didn't know Jeanne, so I'm sorry to have missed that. I ran into Jane a couple of weeks ago at Roslin Bakery, and we had a nice little chat and had promised to grab lunch together, so I'm really sad that that's not going to happen. But she was there, eating her nice croissant breakfast and listening to the music, and had a smile and a dance, and, yeah, she's always brought joy wherever she was. I'll miss her.
I didn't know Jeanne particularly well myself. Jane, on the other hand, I could not turn a corner without seeing up to, you know, two weeks ago when I saw her at the farmer's market. And again, I feel very blessed that I had that last opportunity to say hello to my friend, somebody whom was everywhere in this community, she possibly could be at any given moment, to make sure that the voice of the community was heard. So thank you, Jane, for speaking for the entirety of the community as you could, as one little lady with a little pad and making it happen for all of us.
That's a lovely image.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. See you. Drive safe.
Thanks.